Thank you, and good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Select Board Meeting of August 3, 2021. Tonight's meeting is being held remotely pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, signed by the Governor on June 16, 2021. Tonight's meeting is being recorded and broadcast live by Milton Access Television, and tonight's meeting is also being recorded by Dr. Cindy Christensen. Could we go around the Zoom room and introduce ourselves? My name is Katie Conlon. I'm the Chair of the Board.
Arthur Doyle.
Mike Zulus.
Yeah, I was waiting for Melinda. Did you already say it? I was waiting for you, Melinda.
No, Melinda Collins.
It did well.
We're waiting for you.
Mike Denny. Mike Denny, our Town Administrator, and Susie Stewart, our Executive Administrative Assistant. We're also joined by Denny Swenson, who is the Chair of the Planning Board.
Thank you. I'm sorry I couldn't correct my name. It has my husband's name up there, but I'm Denny.
That's okay. Okay, so tonight, before we get started with the Pledge of Allegiance, well, why don't we do the Pledge of Allegiance first? If everyone would please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and we'll put the flag up on our screen. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The flag.
Of the United States of America. Into the Republic.
Republic.
In which it stands. One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible. With liberty. And justice. From. Hey, thank you, everyone. We have a pretty full agenda this evening, but with the Board's consent, I wanted to defer a couple of items, which are at the end of the agenda. The first one is Item 19, which is an executive session regarding meeting minutes, and a portion of Item 21, which is executive session regarding real property, specifically to defer 41 Worf Street and 334 Edghill Road. So we would still go forward with the executive session on 101 Blue Hills Parkway and Number 20, Deployment of Security Personnel, if that's agreeable to the Board. I see people nodding. We will go with that. Do we? Next item on our agenda is public comments. Do we have anyone here this evening for public comment? If so, please raise your hand. And if you are on, I don't see anyone on the telephone, so I think everyone is here through video. Okay, we have one person. We have Cindy Christensen. Do we have anyone else? Please raise your hand. And Dr. Christensen.
Cindy Christensen, 59 Collmar, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 7. Discussion of my recent letter to the Editor of the Milton Times is on your agenda tonight. I was not asked to be a part of your discussion. I know that a common technique used to control information is to exclude the person who knows the most about a topic. In the case of the information in my letters to the editor, I am that excluded, most knowledgeable person. Because I will not be part of your discussion about my letter, I want to provide you and the public with the following facts. It took two appeals, two letters from the Secretary of State, a demand from the Secretary, a letter to the Editor of the Milton Times, and 26 business days to receive a partial response from the Select Board for my public records request about town council services contracts and requests for bids. I learned that there's been no request for bids for town legal services for at least 15 years. Also, quote, "The town does not typically receive or request the detailed invoices for the retainer," end quote. And there are no contracts for legal services, just some, but not all yearly proposals. When I tried to understand why there are no contracts, I received this explanation from Chair Conlon, quote, "It does not work that way. We do not enter into any such document, written documentation after town meeting. The appropriations made by the town meeting speak for themselves and determine the budget," end quote. That didn't make sense to me. I twice asked to meet with Chair Conlon, but she tacitly refused. I had other questions, but my three minutes does not permit me to mention them now. After 14 days with no other response from the town, I called the Attorney General and the Inspector General's offices. I learned many things, but I only have three minutes. Wanting to give the town a chance to fix the problems, I asked the AG and the IG, who in Milton can address the problems, if the Select Board won't. I was told to reach out to the Warrant Committee Chair and the Town Moderator. So I did. The Warrant Committee Chair, quote, "You are welcome to bring your concerns to the Warrant Committee at one of our meetings," end quote. However, that welcome recently changed. Determined to find solutions to the problems with town council records, I wrote my second letter to the editor, the one that's being discussed tonight. And as the AG suggested, I've talked with the Town Moderator, but that too is a topic for another day. Residents of Milton, the town's records for legal services are a wreck. Select Board, please respond to these two questions. You know of anyone who encouraged, suggested, or told the Chair of the Warrant Committee not to speak with me at one of their meetings? Number two, have any of you reviewed the records I've received? If so, do you agree that they are a mess? And finally, if the reason for discussing my letter and excluding me from the conversation is to shoot the messenger, don't do it. This is not the way to solve these problems, problems that you have the responsibility and the authority to fix.
Thank you, Dr. Christensen. Do we have anyone else this evening for Citizen Speak? I see no other hands. So we will move the speaker back to the attendee list. Thank you. And I will continue on with our next meeting. I think we have Judy Barrett already being moved up as panelist. Okay, so our next item on the agenda, we're having a meeting with Barrett Planning, and Judy Barrett is the Principal of Barrett Planning regarding the East Milton Working Group Study and planning for East Milton Square that was done over the course of the past year. And I understand a report was given to the Planning Board a while back, a couple of months ago. And we are, our Board is also very interested in East Milton Square and planning generally throughout town. So we invited Ms. Barrett to come into our meeting and to give us a presentation on the working group's recommendations. So Judy, we'll turn it over to you. I understand you want to show your screen with a presentation.
I do, but I also gave Susie a copy of the slides in case something goes wrong, as it sometimes does. So we'll just give this a whirl and see if it works. It would be nice.
Excuse me, Judy. Sean, can you allow Judy to co-host for a moment? Thank you.
Oh. You're not seeing my screen, are you?
Yes, we are.
Oh.
Yes.
Wow, that's awesome. Thank you. Is that full screen on your end?
Yes. It is now, yes.
Okay. So we met with the Planning Board a few months back to kind of present the project, which we all had a lot of fun with despite the fact that it was not always the easiest project to work on. We were joined in this effort by Dodson &amp; Flinker, which is a landscape architecture firm that I think is now working with the Planning Department on design guidelines for the Milton Village District 2. So they're very good. And a lot of what you're going to see as a result are kind of their physical planning perspective in this area. So I'm going to give kind of an overview presentation. I don't want to drag this out. If you have questions, I'm happy to discuss them, but I'll at least go over kind of how we approached this project and what we did. So a lot of people were involved, some more than others. We worked, as you know, mainly for the Planning Board. And there was a steering committee, or actually two steering committees. The first one that we worked with was, we met with them a few times pre-pandemic and right after the pandemic, you know, state of emergency began. And after the second large public meeting that we had, which was part of our original scope, I'll talk about that in a minute, we ended up kind of going into a several-month process of working just with a working group that expanded. So you have two lists of working group members on this slide. I don't expect everybody to be able to read them, but essentially what happened is that the Planning Board put out a request to people who wanted to serve on the working group, and a number of people responded. And that entire list that's on the screen are the folks who did. Not everybody participated in every meeting, but we certainly had, I would say, well over half of those folks on most of the meetings. So it was a good process. This is kind of what I want to go over is kind of what the outreach process consisted of and what the participation looked like, how we got going on the project, what we kind of heard early on from the community just before we sort of broke into the Phase 2 part of the process. A little bit about the working group. The vision statement that resulted from working with the working group. So the vision statement came kind of later in the process. And then looking at kind of what the principles are of design and zoning behind that vision statement, and just a real kind of quick look at the recommendations in the report, which is probably more than we should even try to get into in one presentation here. But we, I will have the recommendation tables up, and we can talk about, about those suggestions when we get to that point in the presentation. So as I said, the original scope was we're going to do three community meetings, and we'll have five or six meetings for the working group, and then kind of produce a technical memo on what we found. And the reason that we asked the Planning Board to amend the scope is that it was really clear to us after the second meeting that there was kind of a disconnect or a difference, maybe just a difference between the composition of the original working group and this, what we were hearing from the residents in East Milton. And we wanted to kind of open up the possibility that other people could participate. And let's just see what happens. So Allison put out a request on the Planning Board's behalf. I don't know, 18 people, I think, responded. And April Anderson, who chaired the Board at the time, thought that, and wisely, I would say, she wisely thought that we should just open it to everybody. I have to tell you, the team was originally very frightened of that because it was a large group. But there was a method to the madness, and we're glad that it was opened up. So the revised scope was that we would meet with them on a monthly basis. We would still hold that third public meeting and then meet with the Planning Board afterwards and put out a technical memo. So some of those later pieces of change, although, as you've probably seen, the technical memo turned into a full-blown report, and it kind of went way beyond, I think, what we originally expected. But, but it was clear to us that the Board was going to need that level of input. So we know, when you work on a district plan like this, you always try to sort of peel back the onion to what was this? What explains the form that exists today? Unfortunately, there's some really great kind of pictures, aerial pictures of the area kind of before and after the highway went through. And so, you know, what you're seeing in this really says a lot about how this area evolved physically and why it kind of looks the way it does today. And one of those things that the people just associate with East Milton when they think about what they'd like to see, you know, today and the future. Of course, all of that changed. And, you know, highways do have an impact. And, and so there's, there's a real interest we found in, in this area, not only because of the project I think everybody knows about, which is currently a Chapter 40B development that's in front of the Board of Appeals, but just generally development in this area. It's desirable. It's right by the highway. It, it's frankly a really cool neighborhood. We think it has lots of opportunities to be kind of a niche sort of neighborhood if the town will let it become that. And that's, those are policy choices that we can't make. But I think we all saw tremendous potential in this district and wanted to see, wanted to kind of figure out how to unlock some of that, those possibilities. So we were guided by a set of questions in working through this process. And it was kind of, what are the strengths and weaknesses and opportunities that we see? If you're going to try to make a place better, you always try to understand what the opportunities are. What are the strengths that you're working from? It's, if everybody wants to talk about the problems, you know, traffic, parking, we don't want big, tall buildings. But, but, but you have to get people beyond the problems and think about what the possibilities could be. So that was something that I think guided us all the way through this project. We wondered, you know, can the town really build consensus about future land use? And I think that was probably the hardest part about this whole project. I think that if the 40B had not happened, it might have been easier to do that. But the 40B happened, it's reality, it's not going away. And, you know, it's just kind of a thing that's out there. But I do think it made the conversation a little bit harder. You know, and so we wondered, is that possible? And what, what might be the vision that the community has for East Milton Square? And what is the relationship or between, or the difference between what the community says it wants and what the market is actually looking for? Because if you're trying to kind of allow an area to evolve in its current reality, not the 1940s reality, then you have to think about what's going on with the market. And I don't know how many of you even remember, but I think the second community meeting we had before we went into the different working group model, I had a map up at a presentation. And, and it was sort of this just market map of all the multifamily development that was going all over the place around Milton. Quincy, Canton, Dedham, you know, everywhere. Little dots on a map. And then there was Milton with nothing. And I said at the hearing, you know, the meeting, do you see where you are? Can you imagine what this means in terms of what the market is looking to do? And it was, of course, you know, only months after that, that the Chapter 40B development came in. But that's not the only activity that's going on in East Milton right now. And it's got to be really scary for people who've lived there their whole lives or a long time to see the kind of change that might be coming. But our job as planners is to try to help connect, what do you say you want with what's, what is being looked for? And how do you try to maybe close that gap and bring things a little closer together? And then what strategies and regulatory tools might help the town help East Milton become a more attractive place, a functional place, a more functional place for many people, and a place that thrives, you know? Because obviously, it's a mainly business district, I think, is the concern. And you want to make sure that whatever you allow there and do there is going to work for everybody. It's both a neighborhood and a commercial area. So again, you know, some of this is kind of small text, but we, in the early meetings, the first kind of couple of public meetings we had, we just wanted to get a sense of what the community liked. And none of this is a surprise to us as planners because we hear this kind of thing all the time. But the things that people heard, commented on are traffic and the supply of parking, which is an issue in East Milton. I think everybody knows. Our opinion as planners is it's not a supply problem as much as it is a parking management problem. But, you know, there's philosophical differences about that. Issues with delivery trucks and U-turns. And also, some people said, you know, there's nothing really here for us. And, and so it's kind of hard to feel like you're sort of part of this place. What is it? I'm concerned that there's not that many types of businesses available. So if you go out and do one errand, it's not like you can do a lot of other things. Lack of public transportation, a reliable public transportation. And then this sense that the neighborhood character is kind of hard to define. You know, some people saw it one way, some saw it another. It was very much kind of an eclectic definition. As part of that first public meeting, we had all these images up on a wall, and we asked people to go through and kind of tell us what they thought. It was called a visual preference survey tool. It's a way for people to say, you know, I like that building. I don't like this building. And ideally, they're kind of walking through the display at a time that's rapid enough to sort of almost be like you're driving through the area. It's sometimes fun to do this in a slideshow because you can force people to kind of respond in a timeframe that's about like what it means to drive by a place. But people could take as long as they wanted. And I don't think it's any surprise that the kinds of images people talked about the most were things that were lower-rise, you know, one of the three-story buildings max. You know, anything that was over that tended to get more red dots than green. There were certainly some people who thought they were great, but it was not the dominant impression. People kind of liked that sort of low-rise, smaller-scale, essentially residential scale and style type of building. But, and yet people also want a better streetscape. They want things, you know, they, like everybody, every sort of mixed-use neighborhood. We want more things to do. We want places that we can go and sit and eat outside and have a nice experience. We want to see more vegetation and landscaping and gardens. We want nice sidewalks. We want wide enough sidewalks that we can have a true pedestrian experience. There was some interest that came through in having bike infrastructure. Like, you know, it's not that easy an area to get around in more than just a car, and even that's rather torturous. And then also kind of this desire to have sort of the brick paver kind of sidewalk and other sort of similar materials. So the, what we heard from the residents was certainly something that you could almost imagine in their minds, kind of like what we have now, but nicer. And our challenge as planners was to try to translate that into, well, can the market actually deliver what you want? But certainly, we took, we took heed here that this is what the community says. If we're going to think about, about the possibility of a zoning scheme and an approach that promotes additional development, how do you do that and at least ensure that if the experience of the person on the street, you haven't built gigantic buildings? So we'll talk about that more in a minute. But very much a sense of we want to keep something that's kind of a pedestrian scale that we recognize. The original working group, I think wisely said that, you know, we should find out kind of what, what the businesses want. You know, what are they, what do they think? Because we had some input from the original working group about what they thought the businesses wanted, which was fine. But I think some people, it was actually on the second working group, people said, what do the businesses want? We had no idea. So one of my staff went out one day, mask in hand, you know, and walked around East Milton and just walked into businesses randomly and talked to employees and talked to business owners and just asked, you know, what's it like here? What do you want to see here? And, and what are your, what are your problems or your issues? And of course, the number one thing that came from the businesses was lack of parking enforcement. We heard this across the board. There was some resentment about losing parking at the deck. They were less concerned about backups caused by delivery trucks than residents would be. I guess I wasn't surprised to hear that. They would like to see beautification in, in East Milton Square. Question, of course, is who pays for it? And that really became the genesis of one of the recommendations in the report, which is to work with the business community and the property owners in this area around forming what's called a Business Improvement District, which I can talk about more in a minute. And yet, you know, for all the kind of complaints, everybody said, everybody said, if they were starting over again, they would still want to be in East Milton. That, to me, is a really positive sign. That's like frolic rumbling or whatever. People may have complaints, but they really like it here. But I think that's very important. We see that as a real strength. Working with the expanded group, you know, our tasks were several, was to sort of get them up to speed on kind of what the existing condition analysis, which we had already done. But now we kind of had to do it over again with a different group of people and try to get their take on what they thought the opportunities would be and understanding what's happening with the market and so forth. Our task was to engage them in discussion over a series of meetings about kind of getting more specific about what some of these high and lofty and, you know, good ideas, but what do they actually mean on the ground? Showing them possibilities for achieving some of what they said they would like to see. And then ultimately evolving that into sort of a preferred concept, which is exactly the way this process rolled out. And these diagrams that are on this slide just kind of show you, in the end, there were things that people said they pretty much agreed about and things that still kind of needed more discussion. And again, I think, I'm not blaming the 40B developers for this, but I think that they sort of, you know, the issues around height and so forth, I think a lot of that is not only because people are afraid of big, tall buildings in an area that hasn't historically been like that, but also there was this background kind of concern about this, this behemoth is coming, and, you know, it's too big for East Milton. In any case, the things that, that people could agree on became the basis for a vision statement. There was, we asked people, we get them a survey about, that showed them kind of different possibilities. Essentially, no change, continuing the way things are, kind of a modest amount of change, or something that's really transformative. And we gave them different examples of what that might mean. And the majority of the group said, no, we're really looking for a transformation. I think one of the things that was really interesting to us as we continued to work on this project, although data from the Census Bureau suggests that, that the area of East Milton broadly isn't growing or changing all that much, and that there had actually been kind of a decline in younger households. What we saw actually with dealing with actual people suggested that there are a lot of young families and young households moving into East Milton. And they are bringing with them an expectation about a living market and a desire, I mean, environment, a desire for a living environment that is not necessarily the same as the, as the comfort level with, that longer-term residents have with things the way they are now. And that is going to, I think, continue to be a challenging conversation for you folks as public officials, is recognizing that East Milton is going to continue to change as people move out and younger families move in. And where are those younger families coming from? What is the experience that they bring to East Milton? What did they leave behind? What are they hoping to kind of replicate if they can? It was, it was definitely worth kind of opening the working group to some of that discussion. So interestingly, a majority of them said, we'd actually like to see kind of a more transformative change here. And we recognize that there's a need for zoning changes. What the group could not agree on, and really... What the group could not agree on, and really I think just, it was clear to us that they were kind of dumb in terms of the conversation, but we want you guys to know this is stuff that still needs to kind of be bettered more is, is what's their tolerance level for taller buildings? We had a tremendously interesting conversation with this group about, okay, so four stories is okay, but five is not. Or three stories is fine, but, but you know, five, five, four might be okay, five is not. There's still kind of, I think, some angst about that. Some things that I think they want more information and time to digest. And probably that means the community does it too, too, which is what kinds of things does the town need to do? Beyond zoning, you know, zoning is in some ways the easiest part of this, but, but what is the town, how far does Milton want to go as a town? To help deliver a change in, in East Milton that would actually be transformative and ultimately better for everybody. And then what is the responsibility of the town versus the local business community? So those were kind of three things that are lingering and then three things that really I think we got a pretty good direction on. Can't read this whole vision. I just wanted to highlight some of the key ideas in it. And this vision statement was blessed by the work, the larger working group, you know, we want a vibrant neighborhood. We want a place that offers opportunities for growth and change that's planned. We want circulation that's efficient. We want to be a place that's both a local and a regional destination, recognizing that East Milton is also the town's primary business district. We want, we want a variety of businesses and experiences in East Milton. And we want to see complete streets kind of continue as a policy framework. We want good quality housing, that some of which is affordable as, you know, as sort of defined by 40B. But then other just tiers of affordability of housing in the neighborhood. And stuff that fits with what's there, not necessarily the same as, but fits. We want buildings with inviting facades and sidewalk seating and things we can do. We want a decent signage plan in this area. We want parking management. That was just a uniform thing we heard, was that the town has got to do something about parking management in this area. A, and also kind of the town, we have a vision, it's long-term, we all know that. But the town is sort of making progress toward implementing it. And that, that part of that is kind of a sense of environmental stewardship. And, and ultimately working toward an East Milton Square that both flourishes and is sustainable. So those are kind of the key word things in the vision statement that I think are important to, to keep in mind. So with that play, with that in mind, you know, going back in a way, this is an iterative process. So, you know, what's the existing, what's the condition there today? You know, there's kind of a mixed eclectic character. You've got storefront buildings in some places, you know, small kind of freestanding commercial buildings. Stuff that's, that's kind of spaced out. You've got Milton Market, you have the, you know, the shopping center. And you have a mix of smaller scale housing types. It's a neighborhood that has been divided by the highway. The street grid is very irregular and the parcel shapes and blocks very widely. From a planning perspective, trying to write zoning for an area like that is a challenge. Um, you know, you've got, excuse me, that actually, that slide repeated, but you can probably see that a little bit better. You know, the sort of diverse character and storefront buildings and so forth, but that's where we are as we start. So these are kind of the, the things that we showed the working group. One is if you just build out the way you are, you just don't change the zoning, you don't change anything. What is likely to happen? And so this was sort of one thing, you got a little bit of change, probably some multi-story buildings with expanded parking along Granite Street. And you might see a little bit of demolition here and there, but nothing really sort of big. And of course, all of this assumes compliance with existing zoning. This doesn't assume any kind of 40B or anything else, just what could somebody do under the existing regulatory scheme? So essentially it says it's kind of status quo. And then we showed them, you know, think about these different models of building blocks. So this is kind of how zoning in East Milton Square will sort of drive the development pattern. You require a fair amount of parking. And of course, why do towns do this, right? They require a lot of parking because everybody says there's not enough parking. But what you end up doing is you sort of force these buildings to under-occupy their lots. Which less value to the building, because let's face it, what, what drives the value of a commercial property is the income it produces. So the more parking you require and the less height you give a building, you're basically confining it to a certain level of value, which not only, we weren't paying attention to tax revenue, you guys might. But what we're looking at is what is the investment desirability of these properties? And it's, it's not that great unless you can get around the rules. So concept two was something that is sort of a moderate change. And we were thinking about, you know, some modest kind of zoning tweaks in this area. You know, kind of improving cross-access between the parking lots to facilitate some shared parking. A good example of cross-access for parking that kind of makes better use of existing parking supply is in this, in the city of Melrose, where virtually all the parking areas behind buildings are connected by these sort of little alley roads. And it gets all the traffic that's trying to kind of find a place to park off the main street. And it's, it's just neat. So that's the kind of thing we were thinking you could maybe strengthen your parking regulations by looking at cross-access. Designing buildings with ground floor surface parking hidden by front of linear space along the street, linear space along the street. What that means is some of the parking gets allowed under the building at grade. So without the height, you can't get sub-surface parking here, but you could probably get parking at grade. And then, you know, placing parking on the ground floor, of course, without any users above. So this would require changes to zoning, but they're meek changes. They're, they're sort of, they're things that probably wouldn't set people off too much. This might facilitate some affordable housing and some public benefits. Not a lot, but some. You're just not, there's not enough scale here to make kind of a change. Um, we talked about concept three, a fair amount. This ultimately is what the group said they kind of preferred. And so we ended up taking this to do a more detailed kind of vision plan, which I'm going to show you. But it's kind of a visual representation of what could be, if you allowed this area, if you unlocked the development potential of this area and allowed it to evolve in a way that's more vibrant and frankly marketable to the outside world. So, you know, you've got, and again, it's not all one zoning district either. You've got area, different areas here. We tried to be sensitive to that. So some places would have more development with, you know, preferably not facing the neighborhood, but parking garages kind of behind them to accommodate all the parking that they would need. New buildings with ground floor parking and shared parking below. Closed curb cuts, that's one of the things that needs to be looked at in East Milton is just all the curb cuts. If people, people want to talk about traffic problems, it's not just the volume. It's also just how haphazard the area is to drive through. Maybe a pocket park in the corner. You know, a new building replacing a gas station, we're not advocating tearing somebody's property down. We're saying if you create an opportunity, you might get something different there and you might get something better. So we were thinking about more transformation and where you see the kind of orangey blocks, that's really where we're saying the bulk of the change probably should be focused. And so the final plan kind of draws off that transformational drawing. And so the vision plan kind of focuses really on the heart of East Milton Square, showing transformation into a thriving mixed-use center. The ultimate zoning recommendation for this area was both a more concentrated development area and then also we, what we call gateway or areas of influence, kind of almost sub-district kind of zoning around it. Um, you know, one of the things that, that needs to happen here, in our opinion, is that there has to be a way to consolidate parking into either shared lots or some kind of structure with fewer curb cuts, you know, comparison of the block bounded by Adam Street Granite Mechanic is kind of instructive. It has 23 curb cuts. The vision plan shows just three. But you can't get that without providing opportunities and incentives and permission frankly, to do that kind of consolidation. It isn't just going to happen on its own. And these are just kind of examples of buildings that might fit in an area like that and how the reduction in curb cuts can be achieved. People said they wanted pedestrian amenities. I, I think most people living in or right adjacent to a commercial area would like to have more pedestrian opportunities so that not everybody has to drive to where they want to go. But also if I'm going to live in East Milton, I'd like to be able to walk down the street and do something. The market reality of that is that it takes a certain degree of investment to make that happen. So this is again, why we said, if you want to have the, the things you want to have in East Milton, you have to think about the market's ability to provide as much of that as possible. We still think ultimately the town is going to have to play a much more active role in solving parking there. The private sector is not going to take care of all that. But reorganizing parking would make a big difference. And enforcement is a real problem and it needs to be addressed. But to get these kinds of spaces, which ranked high on the visual preference survey, it's going to take a certain degree of investment. So we tried to just illustrate to people, when you allow these kinds of things, here are opportunities in the district now that could be opened up for a better pedestrian experience. And those are shown on some of these plans. You can kind of see in the drawing on the upper right, the sort of arrows, it's kind of a way to sort of think about how one might, might move through an area and get around entirely on foot. Building massing and design, this was probably the biggest conversation. I don't think it's any surprise to any of you. But there are ways to think about human scale and the height and the bulk frankly, that a developer needs if they're going to provide public amenities like the ones people say they want. And a lot of it has to do with what's the height of the street versus on the upper floors. So it's pretty common in a taller building today to have pretty much over three stories. What's called a recessed facade. It's a way to sort of bring a little bit back in the street. The height that it sort of extends above the, the, the height that people are accustomed to looking at. The height that still gives kind of a pedestrian scale. Then the other thing I think that's instructive about some of these images is that the, the choice of roof structure also has a lot to do with what height feels like. So there are different ways to think about this. And it can be, you know, not codified per se, and it could be, but it could be certainly be achieved with just some good design guidelines that can be used to review project applications. Building height, you know, this is one of the areas that still needs discussion. It's a very difficult planning decision. Your business district allows three stories and 45 feet by right and up to six by special permit. A lot of people didn't seem to understand that that was the case. But you already allow a fair amount of height if you grant a special permit. So the problem with that, of course, is if anybody tries to get more height, it becomes a very contentious permitting process. And that, that doesn't leave anybody happy. I think that as planners, you know, we're all trying to encourage communities to think about clearer zoning, zoning that is, that says what you want instead of all the stuff that you don't want. It's so common when you read zoning bylaws to say, you can't do this, you can't do that, we don't want this, thou shalt not do whatever. And so what's left is this very muddy vision of what the town actually wants. And a way to think about a better way to use zoning is to make the zoning clear about what you actually want. And if you get there, then you actually don't need all these special permits. But you do have to be clear. And you have to understand that when you are that clear and you take the special permit away, that you're essentially entering into an agreement with an applicant, that if they do what you say you want, your project's going to be approved. And I mean, I was on a planning board for years in my town. I'm on the ZBA now. I have been for 12 years. But that's always very scary to people that somehow, oh my God, we can't say no. Well, why would you want to say no if they're doing everything you say you want? And that's a big question, I think, for regulatory boards today. But, but it's just important to understand that if you want, if you want amenities, if you want improvements to parking, if you want improvements to the circulation pattern in the area, and the town's not going to pay for all this, the money has to come from somewhere. And it's going to come from a market. If it's going to come from anywhere, it's going to come from the market. And the market wants to know, what can I do? And if the only sure thing the market can do is three stories when that's not economic anymore, then you don't get much at all investment, or unfortunately you get chapter 40B. I mean, I just need to make that clear. I think the selectmen all know, select board knows. I've been working in 40B for almost three decades. And I can tell you, when I saw, put that map up at that meeting, my heart sunk when I found the map. I put it in the slide presentation. My heart just sunk when I saw it. I thought, I know what's coming here. And that's exactly what happened. And you just don't want to do that if you can do something about it. So I think this is, again, I will be the first to admit, it's still kind of an unanswered question, but it's something the town is going to have to look at is how much are we willing to unlock the development pension, potential of this area? So the property owners can do something with their property that makes economic sense and you get a better district. These illustrations toward the end of this presentation are just showing ways like the image on that upper right, you don't want that. That's no longer pedestrian scale. The image right below it is an example of how you can have something that is three stories, that is what people are used to now and have upper stories set back so that from the pedestrian perspective, it's not seen. And it doesn't have a daunting effect on, on the person on the street. And it also reduces shadow, shadow effect. So on the recommendation side, we have this elaborate set of recommendations in the report that, that really kind of, you got to move on now. We've done what we can for you. Having kind of an advisory group that's, that includes a lot of different people on it is probably what you need to have so that people can continue to resolve some of these unresolved issues. Hopefully it will be easier for people to have that discussion once the residences of East Milton project has been disposed of in whatever way the board is going to deal with that. Having kind of an implement, the implementation committee involved. You know, adopting or advising the vision statement at the planning board level so that you have a guidance, guiding principle that you're working from. There's a lot of zoning recommendations in here and we'll go through them all. But essentially we see the need to divide that area into three sub-districts relative, that, that, that change based on scale. So that there's a core that's more energy, that's more intensive development. And as you get back away from that, closer to immediate residential areas, the scale drops down and it's less intensive development. In order to make any of this work, the town needs design guidelines. There's no question in our mind about it. We tried to make a number of suggestions about what those might address. Parking needs to be looked at. Enforcement is key. We are convinced that parking management is a big answer to this area. You're not going to solve anything else about parking unless there's a very consistent and frankly strict enforcement to policy. I mean, I can't tell you how many people told us, whether it's true or not, this is the perception. If somebody gets a ticket, they can just go down to town hall and get it waived. And if that's true, that needs to stop. And if it doesn't, you're going to continue to have issues in East Milton. I don't mean to be so direct with you, but you just, this is a little tough love. I think how holding continued sort of community conversations with folks about, you know, what is, what does equity look like? If you're trying to plan for the transformation of an area, how do you accommodate affordable housing without getting a project that nobody wants? How do you do that? And understanding the economics of inclusionary zoning. Are you trying, when you're trying to make this a better place, are you also making it a place that's an opportunity or area for more people? I think one of the things you're going to see happen in East Milton is that as more families, younger families continue to move in, you're likely to see a change in the income mix in that area. And sometimes when you have that happening in a neighborhood or, you know, neighborhood or a village level, it causes a lot of tension for people. I don't know that that's happening, but it's my sense. Understanding that, that an environmental stewardship approach means really kind of focusing on compact development, on making sure you have adequate stormwater standards, continuing to invest in complete streets. It matters. I know people sometimes get anxious about that. But if you want to improve mobility, you got to think about complete streets. Trying to think about maybe some kind of shuttle system with the MBTA. The MBTA is kind of always open to sort of doing more if they have a sense that there's demand. But they're not going to do it otherwise. And then working with the, the property owners of the businesses around a sort of a brand or identity for East Milton. This is where we think a, a business improvement district would make a lot of sense. That really has to sort of get the approval of the property owner. That really has to sort of get the approval of the property owners. It's a little hard to set up a bid in Massachusetts. It's much easier in other states, but it can be done. And I think if you look for the bids in the city of Boston, I know Tim is very familiar with this, can tell you kind of how that works and how helpful it can be. And then this is just a map that sort of shows what those three sub-districts would would look like. So there's the core, the mixed use center that's more intensive development. There's this sort of gateway adjacent to it and then the smaller kind of transitional area, you know, on the southern end of Granite Street. So the rest of it is just residential. Just leave it alone. Let it be what it is. It's fine. And then where you see that dotted line, I don't know if that is visible to all of you, but there's sort of a dotted line here running kind of along the highway and so forth, Granite Street. In those areas like right on the main commercial roads in the neighborhood, you should have a a ground floor public use requirement somewhere in that area. That has actually helped some some commercial properties in places like Medford, Somerville, going through this pandemic to have a way to continue to use ground floor space when maybe the demand for retail wasn't so hot. So that's sort of an overview and I'm happy to kind of answer any questions that you have. You know, this is the rest of this is just about the zoning like recommendations and how the uses would be different. I can just sort of tell you the height differences range from, you know, sixty five to fifty five depending on the sub-district. And then there are all these sort of other standards around how that height gets dispersed through the building. Parking requirements would be significantly reduced, opportunities for parking structures and so forth. So that's that's it. There's a lot of content in that report. I hope it's helpful. It certainly was a very interesting project for us to work with the town on.
Thank you very much, Judy. That's a lot of food for thought and a very comprehensive report on the East Milton working groups work of these of this past year. If I can just ask Suzie, I see Kathleen O'Donnell, who was a member of the planning board in the attendee group. Why don't we move Kathleen up to panelist as well? It's ten minutes to eight. I know Judy Barrett has another meeting to get to and we have a full agenda. But I'd like to ask if any of our members or the planning board members who are here tonight have any questions or comments for Judy. Anyone, it's a lot of information to take in and we want to go through all these recommendations, Judy, in a little more detail over time.
Do you have the report?
We do, yes. Yes, we have the report. So anyone, any any thoughts for Judy or any questions before we let Judy get off to her next Zoom meeting?
Well, I just would would like to say once again to thanks to Judy because I know that this is a very been a very difficult process. As you, as she's mentioned many times, there's been this ongoing discussion about, you know, East Milton and what direction it should take. I've lived in East Milton for thirty years and so seen it from, you know, not so lively to more lively. But I think the what the planning board will be facing is trying to decide what to do about the zoning changes. And I think that the report has been a good guidepost for us to start to work on that process.
I think I saw Richard's hand up also.
You did. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to thank Judy also as my my neighbor so eloquently, always speaks so well of East Milton. My other neighbor, Mr. Doyle, knows this as well, but I mean, I do believe that it already is becoming a destination place, whether it's Milton Market Place, Navara, you know, the restaurants, Abbey. You see people constantly coming from everywhere to go there. Your your comments on parking management clearly echo resonate with me and but I do think that the fact just having the discussion and addressing the potential changes that are coming forward will only help all of us in the in the long run. Having grown up here and and just moved back here five years ago after being gone for thirty plus years. It is an amazing thing to live here, to be able to walk to the square every day. And whether it's the square, the parks, Andrews, all of it, there were some great amenities. So East Milton is truly a great place to live and I think that this report probably don't think about. Thank you for that, Judy, and all the work.
Thank you.
Anyone else this evening?
If I could just
Yes, Denny.
Denny Swenson. So in response to East Milton's pleased but thoughtful planning efforts and frankly, because we are hearing from the citizens that they wanted to be heard, the planning board reached out to Judy Barrett. Her firm Barrett Consulting has an excellent reputation for running outreach efforts that are very thoughtful. And I do appreciate her professional opinions throughout. And I also appreciate the way that she confirmed that the majority of citizens of East Milton in attendance were really struggling with with going any higher than three stories. That's something that we've been grappling with on our board as well. You know, we've had lots of public meetings over the years and the attendees are pretty, you know, consistent. You know, in the abstract, everyone's in favor of amenities. But the majority of the citizens who come forward and put their name on the record, you know, they've indicated that they're not interested in amenities at the cost of going to five stories. So it's very challenging. For instance, this topic of five stories came up recently at a planning board meeting in relation to four forty Granite Avenue. And the very next day, our board received seventeen emails of people living right there basically stating that they're not opposed to mixed use or to revitalization, exactly what Kathy Barrett, I'm sorry, Judy Barrett has been saying. They say they want three stories max with a possible step back to four stories in special circumstances that respect the neighborhood. They are calling for adequate parking on site, something much more than Judy Barrett sees as necessary. The citizens are calling for, you know, something along the lines of one spot per bedroom, enough parking for employees, customers if necessary. They always seem to state that they chose Milton as a suburb and want to continue with that village-like feel and architecture and like Judy, I forget your words, but they were excellent. They want something that connects to what's already there. So I just, I thought Judy Barrett did an excellent job tonight of explaining what she was hearing from the citizens. And I think that that's excellent. That's what I was hoping is that the East Milton residents who have taken the time to speak at all these various meetings and to participate in all these working groups, I just want to make sure that they know that they're being heard and clearly understood. And I just think there are a lot of great things in this report that are food for thought. I think that's what Katie said, food for thought. And that we should be looking at the many planning aspects that that were brought up through this outreach process. You know, many discussions have sort of been started here and we're going to need to continue them. And I just wanted to do a plea to the neighborhoods to hang in there and to know that they're key stakeholders and we are listening and to please stay involved. I know it's a lot of late nights, but we're hearing you and we're going to wrestle through this with the help of people like Judy Barrett. Maybe she'll come back as we get to the next chapter. And and we want to make this the best it can be for the people who live there and beyond. So thank you, Judy Barrett. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Denny. I think we have Melinda and then Arthur and it's almost eight o'clock and then we'll try to perhaps after that let Judy go.
So concise, right?
Well, just let us know, Judy, if you need to go before we finish up here.
Thank you. Yes, I mean, Judy, I have no problem if you leave while I'm speaking. But but thank you, Madam Chair. I I think the thing that I most took away from both reading the report and listening to Judy's presentation is that if we don't unlock the potential that that we need to so that the market can actually come in and help us improve the district, we may continue to see this development driven by forty B projects, which, you know, I I'm a huge housing advocate. Everybody knows. I really believe in affordable housing and we need it. But I also know our revenue situation and I also know from campaigning that that people do want amenities and and want to generate revenue that stays in the town. And that if if this area is driven to, you know, more housing than than commercial, then one of our primary business districts perhaps won't develop as it should until it's into its full potential. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. And then Mr. Zulus. Mr. Doyle, you're on mute.
I bad habit. Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and thank you, Judy, for your very comprehensive presentation. The one thing that comes to my attention consistently is the people who want to be heard but are not heard, that don't want to show up at meetings, that recognize this is a very increasingly eclectic neighborhood, far more heterogeneous in many respects than it has been in the past. And I get asked whether or not there are outreach plans such as surveys of all of the residents that they can anonymously participate in because they quite honestly do not want to get into confrontational situations with the people who are continuously showing up at the public hearings. So you might think of whether or not there's a way to garner a broader base of opinion and input through electronic or other mechanisms that would solicit information from populations that want to contribute but don't want to do so publicly.
Right. Good point. I agree.
And Mr. Zulus.
Judy, I have a question that really results in part from what Melinda and Arthur said and also from what you said. You you said that the key, one of the key questions is how willing is the town to unlock the development potential of the area? And so from your work, how willing are the residents and the businesses of the area to unlock the development potential of the development potential of the area? And and you may not, you may not have a good handle on it, but if you do, I'd like to hear it.
I think it's a real mixed bag. I think that until the residences at East Milton forty B is settled, I think it's just going to be a challenge to have this conversation. You know, I I think even when it's resolved, it may still be difficult. But I think that, you know, I mean, I I I I know from the second working group, there's there's more interest in making it a place than I thought. And it's a neighborhood that's changing more in terms of demographics than I thought. I think that's going to be one of the great challenges you have as a town in trying to answer the question, what do residences residents of East Milton want? Because it's definitely, from what I could see, not a uniform group in just in demographically, age, wealth, whatever. It's 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 a real mix. That can be a real opportunity. But I think to Mr. Doyle's point, I think there are people who have an opinion, who are not going to go to a public meeting because they just don't want to get into an argument. Not everybody wants to be a select board member, you know, and and stick your neck out. Remember, but but I think that there's, I think there's more support. We were surprised that the working group, majority of the working group, said they wanted that transformative plan. We were very surprised. We were not expecting that. So I think there's more of that there than you may realize.
And just to clarify, Judy, when you say a place, they want to make it a place, you mean that transformative plan or?
See, you're never going to be able to physically reorganize that area unless you make it marketable to do that, unless you make it economic. That's the only way you're going to physically reorganize that area. It's not going to happen otherwise. I mean, one parking space per bedroom, Denny, I gasped when you said that. Number one, that's a fair housing issue waiting to blow up in your faces. But but I mean, it's also just, you know, that's exactly the opposite of what you need to be talking about.
That that was, that was what was in the letters, Judy. That was
I understand. Oh, I understand that. I'm just saying that, but I think people just because there's, because people have trouble with circulation and getting around, they assume we just need more parking. Well, you need to reorganize the parking you've got. But it's, so I'm just saying, I think there's a lot of misinformation out there about what the solutions are to the problems that exist that people are living with. I think there's a lot of just misinformation and and it's not your fault. What they want, you know, I hear that all the time. We need more parking. Sometimes that's the last thing you want, but you know, but it's hard for them to get it.
Okay, anyone, anything else before we let Judy go? Mr. Wells?
Just one quick question, Madam Chair. On the two projects, is, am I correct? And I'm going to watch you tonight. Is the Henry's project four stories? Am I correct? It's four stories from ground level?
Yes, in in different places, it's different heights, but yes.
And that building that you did show Judy, I've gone to visit it now twice because, as you know, Dedham Square came up in the original steering and those are both four stories. And the one in the corner, the one has two restaurants, El Centro and Mission BBQ, Blue River BBQ, and both are, and it's like, I mean, it it's definitely has appeal to it. That whole square has has an appeal to it, so.
And it wasn't always like that.
No, it was not. It was, but thank you again.
Yeah, happy to see you again.
And if, does anyone have anything else, Denny or Kathleen, anything else that you wanted to add?
Well, I just wanted to say that the neighborhood has changed a lot and there are people here who expect, because they've come from other places, expect more than what the square presently delivers. The classic example is an ice cream shop, but you know, there's, as I said, the change in the in the demographics is quite substantial. And when I was running the planning board and collecting signatures, the number of people who said to me, we need to be doing more for our commercial base. We want to have some more commercial activity so that, you know, our taxes are reduced and all that sort of thing. So there's a lot of pressure for that. And I I appreciate Judy's comment about the fact that unless it's economic, we're not going to get those changes. So.
Right.
Okay, well, then if there's nothing else, then I just want to thank Judy Barrett, not only for her work on the East Milton planning, but also for all the work that you're doing for the town and the Board of Appeals on the forty B projects. There's quite a few of them. And I think Judy has a lot of other clients other than Milton, but I think Milton has kept you extremely busy, Judy, in the last six or eight or ten months. We're all very grateful for all of your service. It's it's much appreciated.
Thank you. I enjoy working with the town. We always do, so it's fine.
You've been a big help to all of us. Thank you, Judy. All right. And thank you to Denny Swenson and Kathleen O'Donnell for joining us tonight. Yes, yes, thank you so much. Thank you very much, Judy. Bye bye.
Thanks for inviting us.
Okay, thank you, Kathleen. Thank you, Denny.
Thank you. Thank you. Good night, everyone.
So item number five on our agenda is discussion of FY twenty two water and sewer rates. And we already have Public Works Director Chase Berkeley and Torey Fetter of Current and Woodward and Current with us. So thank you both for waiting tonight.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So yeah, Chase Berkeley, Director of Public Works. So we're here once again to present annual water and sewer rate changes. So just to refresh everybody's memory on the process, so at the conclusion of the fiscal year, we do an analysis on water and sewer sales consumption and we look at how much water we purchase from the state agency, the MWRA, and come up with a rate recommendation that essentially is designed to break even with the expected costs in the fiscal year. So the the rate recommendation we present takes into some assumptions about how much water we think we're going to sell. Our costs from the MWRA are fixed, so we're paying off our bill from eighteen months ago essentially because the MWRA billing system runs on a calendar year. We run a fiscal, so in FY twenty two, we'll be paying off calendar year twenty water consumption, which is a quantity in an own amount. So just a couple of opening comments and then I will let Mr. Fetter from Woodward Current present his report. So it turns out that the circumstances surrounding the COVID nineteen pandemic had a very substantial increase on the amount of water we sold to residents. And that's not expected if you assume that most people stayed in their houses longer than they typically do, being such a strong residential community. You know, that's where most of our residents reside and we don't have the same type of commercial percentage that other towns and cities see. So where we saw a significant increase in sales, city of Boston, for example, City of Boston, for example, saw a very significant decrease. If you think about all those empty office buildings and an airport running at a fraction of its capacity, everybody that wasn't going to the city was staying home and flushing it home, we'll call it. So, you know, we see that in our numbers. And so, our increase for water assessment particularly was pretty steep because of that. So, we're, we're seeing a 10% increase in our MWA assessment year to year. But with the strong sales associated with that, we're able to absorb some of that increase, which is good until we can, you know, go into that a little further. But I just wanted to kind of call out also that this time last year, the MWA made some significant efforts to reduce that assessment, not knowing the outcome and the impacts of the pandemic at the time. They brought that percentage down by manipulating some of their finances to ease the burden on cities and towns. So, that put us in a good position last year and then we're actually in a very good position this year. So, with that, I'll just, I'll turn it over to Toby to explain the rate report, which you all should have in front of you and would be happy to answer any questions you have about it.
Sure. Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be with you all tonight. I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to share my screen because really the, the, the story of fiscal 22 for Milton is really two different things. It is what, what Chase just alluded to, and I'm sorry, I'm using double screens here, so I'm going to be looking back and forth. The, the first piece is really your MWRA assessment, which goes up pretty substantially. And share screen. Here we are. Screen one. Okay, could you all let me know when you can see that?
We can see it now, Toby.
Wonderful. So, what, what you can see here is, is this is the MWRA community assessment table. This is the final one. And what you can see is that your MWRA water bill went up by around 10.2% compared to last year for the coming fiscal cycle. And your sewer bill went up by a little over 2%. Now, that is highly, highly ameliorated by, can you see the change that I just made in the screens?
Yes.
Wonderful. This is, th, this is the good portion of the story. So, while your MWRA bills, which account for about 55% of your overall water bills and around 70% of your overall sewer bills, while those have gone up significantly, what you've seen for the first time in the 10 years that I've been working with Milton to set rates is you've seen a very large increase in actual build consumption on both water and sewer. And, you know, if you're, you know, one way to think about it is if your bill remains the same, like if you, the overall amount of money you need to raise remains the same, but your consumption drops by 5%, you need a 5% rate increase just to break even. And for the first time in about a decade, that's not the case in Milton. And I would say, in my expectation, certainly looking at our Massachusetts offices and the return of workers into their offices, I don't think that's going to change very quickly. And so, I think some of the trends that we've seen towards higher consumption are likely to remain durable, certainly at least for the next fiscal year. And we've set rates with that assumption. Now, you probably have all looked at and seen the, the rate calculation sheets. I'm just showing you both the, the water and sewer consumption trends. But what you can, what you would note is the significant increase in the amount of water and sewer volumetric sales that you have, which form the basis of your overall revenue generation. So, you know, what, what we see is in spite of the fact that you're going to have about a 10% rate increase or at least a 10% assessment increase for the MWRA on water, I think given the increase that you have in actual sales, my recommendation is for a 2.5% increase on water. And I think you can probably hold sewer even. And one of the reasons for the differential there is simply that water, as, as Chase was alluding to, you know, water you're paying for usage on an annual basis about 18 months preceding. Sewer, a big chunk of your bill is based on a three-year average. So, the, the, the actual fluctuation in your sewer assessment is always going to be lower than on the water and the, the, basically the usage gets spread out. So, it's, I mean, my personal, my personal professional opinion is, I, I, I think you go with a 2.5% on water, a 0% on sewer, and that's the best story we've had in Milton in a number of years. And with that, I'm more than happy to talk about how your bills are calculated or any of the other questions that may come up.
All right, why don't we see if anyone has any comments or questions at this stage? Do you need to leave your presentation up, Mr. Fetter? Is, is there more to come?
I'd be happy to take it down. My apologies.
Okay, just so we can see if everyone has. Okay, I see Mr. Zulus and Mr. Dennehy.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Fetter, can you just, and you may have done it and I missed it, but can you just explain the basis for the MWR assessment increases? What, what was the basis for those significant increases?
Sure. So, on the water side, basically, they assess based on your flow share percentage of overall water use. So, you're being assessed 10.2%, or pardon me, let me, let me pull up the MWR assessments. You are being assessed basically your flow share percentage of overall MWA water use in calendar year 20. As Chase was alluding to, there's a significant delay in the way this is calculated. So, that increased your overall share significantly over the preceding year. And it's based on the metering data that the MWA collects. And I believe three different meters in Milton in comparison to the overall water use of all the other MWA communities.
So, so the assessment increases because our usage increases compared to other, other communities?
That's correct. Your, your usage went up faster. The average MWA water use, you can see right here, Mr. Zulus, went up 1.8%.
Yep.
Yours went up 10.2 and, and that was solely due to the amount of water used within the town.
Good. Thank you.
Mr. Dennehy, I think you had your hand up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Toby and Chase, thank you for that. And I just want to refresh the viewers' memories that I believe last year water was a 4% increase and sewer was a 1% increase. Is that correct?
I'm not looking at the report, but that sounds correct, yes.
Okay, so, that, that's, that's the great piece is, is both of them are lower than last year's increase. Thank, thank you for all your work, Toby and Chase, on this.
Thank you, Mr. Dennehy. Mr. Doyle?
Madam Chair, I had a quick question just for my information, if I may. When I read the document, noticed the use of the word utility for the MWRA. It raised in my mind, the question is, to what entity is the utility responsible and accountable?
So, under the MWRAs enabling legislation, I mean, the, the, it's actually the communities themselves that are responsible to the MWRA. And, and it's the fact that you operate as enterprise-funded utilities that basically makes the utility responsible, quote unquote. I mean, in the end, the town could have an ad valorem taxes, some, a very few communities in Massachusetts at this point do. But, you know, the fact that the matter is the rates are set with the goal of making sure that the people who are receiving the benefits, meaning the utility customers, are the ones who are fully incurring the costs to the town from the MWRA assessment. Does that make sense? Mr. Doyle, you are on mute.
Not fully, but I'll pursue it on the side bar. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, then does anyone have any other comments or questions for Chase Berkeley or Toby Fetter? If not, do we have a motion on the, on the rates? Would someone like to make a motion? The recommended water rate increases 2.5% and the recommended sewer rate increases 0.
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair, based on your comments right there, those rates you just stated.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Collins. Do we have any further, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Mr. Doyle, you are muted. Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. All right, thank you so much, Mr. Berkeley and Mr. Fetter for coming in this evening and for waiting. We appreciate your time.
Thank you, everybody.
And for your work.
Take care. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Item six on our agenda is a discussion and an update from the Equity and Justice Committee. And I see Pat Lattimore, who's the co-chair of the committee, and we have several other members of the committee. I think we may have at least one in the attendee list, is Karen Gross-Horian also here for the Equity and Justice Committee. I believe she probably is. Suzie, if we could move up Karen Gross-Horian.
Madam Chair, but I'm having difficulty getting her over to the panelist board. And I'm not sure, Karen, if you're able to join. I believe you have to accept it. I'm going to try one more time and there should be a, a prompt.
Okay. Oh, there we go. Great. Good evening, Pat.
Good evening.
You have several members here. If you, maybe you'd like to introduce everyone or let us know who will be speaking this evening or?
Well, I'm not going to introduce everyone, but a number of people are here. And I'm going to speak a little bit, but I also have two other colleagues who are, have been working on what we have as a survey subcommittee, and that's Janelle Lucas and Aldo Guerrero. And both of them, we sent in a presentation. We have three items we'd like to cover tonight. One is a proposed survey of community members. The second, and some support that we would like to get for that survey from you as the select board. The second is to talk a little bit about an FY22 budget. And the third piece, if we talk about the next step for town staff to become more involved in the DEI process. So, if that is okay with you, Madam Chairman, I would like to start with the survey.
Yes, that sounds great. Do you want to put up a slideshow? We have the slides.
I believe that the slides are going to be put up by Suzie.
Okay.
And Suzie, if, and if Aldo and Janelle would unmute themselves and also show their videos, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, good evening, Ms. Lucas and Mr. Guerrero. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for inviting us.
Suzie, can you do the slides?
Yes, give me just two seconds. Hold on one second.
Is it possible to make that larger?
Yes, Suzie, can we go to full screen, to the full screen? Well, if we move into the full screen view, that would be best.
Suzie, I think if you go to present, there might be an option there on the right top side next to share. Keep going.
Suzie, it's right up in the upper right corner.
Right, upper right corner.
Right next to that yellow share button on the left of it, it says, "Present."
Upper right. Suzie, I believe you're going in the wrong direction. And so, all the way to the, to the right of the screen, all the way over, there's a share button.
Sean, with MATV, I'm actually doing the controlling. I, where are you speaking about?
At the upper right, there is, you see the yellow share button at the very top. It's this button that says, "Present," right to the side of it.
Come down a little bit, Sean, and then over to the right.
Yeah.
Yes. There you go.
There we go.
Ah, thank you, Sean.
Okay, thank you, Sean.
Okay, thank you. So, I think I will start off, but also Aldo will jump in where necessary or where he would like. So, let me see, I think if we could go to the next slide, the first slide. So, we wanted to start out talking a little bit about the goals of the survey and the timing. So, the first point is that we really thought it was important to hear from residents, their perspectives, their attitudes and their experiences of living in Milton, as well as their thoughts about issues of diversity, equity and inclusion. The second goal that we had for the survey is to share with the broader community some of what our work has been focused on, as well as thinking about how we might move forward with some of our final recommendations that we might make back to the select board. The last piece, I think, in terms of this slide is that the survey, we're hoping, we're planning on, if everything works out as planned, I'm sorry, I'm getting a phone call, the survey will be available to residents shortly after Labor Day. Next slide, please. So, we designed the survey to be parallel to many of the working groups, the subcommittees of the larger committees. So, we wanted to certainly focus on the importance of diversity, equity and inclusion to residents. What is to get a sense of their sense of belonging as well as engagement in the town? Some of their interactions with town government and departments, including the police, fire, schools and government. Residents' perceptions of housing and zoning, some of their experiences that they may have had with town enforcement activities and their satisfaction with town services. Using an equity lens for all of those perspectives. We are hoping, we, we've attempted to do a pilot test of sorts. We don't actually have the mechanism for the survey to go out at this particular point in time, but we've been gathering feedback in terms of how long the survey may take to complete. And so, we're thinking it will take about 20, anywhere from 20 to 30 minutes, depending on your experiences in the town and what you hope to share or want to share. So, we are hoping to gain support from the select board and Mr. Dennehy as well, who has been, I, I think, very helpful in communicating with Pat around how we might actually get the survey onto Google Forms, having someone from the IT department be involved in that, as well as some other, I guess I would say, social media sources, town website, et cetera. Perhaps reverse calling to inform folks of the survey, as well as perhaps a piece in the Milton Times as well. Again, we're hoping to have the survey open for several weeks. We think two to three weeks might give a little bit of time. And once folks get back into a little bit more of a routine and back to school, we're hoping that residents will find some time to spend on the survey. Okay.
The only thing I would add is, you know, a, a big part of the reason we want to have this survey out is Diversity, Equity and Justice for All Committee wanted to be able to do the work that we're doing, meet with the, the, the different parts of town that we're meeting with, the police, fire, schools and government committees. But we also want to get an understanding of how the community feels about the work that's going on. But we also want to get an understanding of how the community feels about the work that's going on and the recommendations that we're providing. We don't want, we just don't want to be doing this kind of work in a vacuum. We want the support from the community to understand, you know, what the challenges that we're encountering are, but also to get an understanding of how they feel, really.
And so that's the survey. And I'd like to, as we said, one of the things that we hope to gain from you as the select board is the support to have to administer the survey and to have the town, the town administrator, Mr. Dennehy, be able to help us with a couple of things. One is getting the survey into an electronic form, and we decided to use something called Google Forms. And then the second piece, as Janelle said, was to help to distribute and publicize the survey. And so we'd like to ask you formally for permission to go ahead and do those two things. And you could take down the, Sean, I guess you could take.
One more, is one more slide?
Oh, I'm sorry. One more slide.
So we just wanted to speak for a minute about the survey results and what it is we plan to do with the survey and our hopes for the survey. So the first step is to certainly collect the data and engage in some analysis. We have actually spoken with two researchers that we may be able to gain some support from in terms of doing some of the data analysis. One is a quantitative researcher, the other is a qualitative researcher. We do hope to have at least one focus group after the survey results are collected and or certainly community meetings as well. So the first piece is to think about the data and think about what gaps or areas of concern that may have been elicited through the survey. We will then also provide the results of the survey to you, the select board. And then we also hope that the survey provides a baseline for residents' views on diversity, equity, and inclusion. And we'll provide other opportunities for either similar survey or surveys that sort of expand on the multiple areas of this particular survey so that we, as a town, can gain a firmer understanding or greater understanding of diversity, equity, and inclusion priorities over time. I think, and that's the last slide.
Okay, thank you. Then I think we can take the slideshow down and go back to our, here we are, we can see everyone now. So thank you very much for your presentation on the survey and discussion of what this would entail. Do, does anyone from the board have any questions or comments for the committee regarding the survey? I think there are a few other things the committee wants to talk about, but let's cover the survey first. Mr. Zulus.
So I know that Mike Dennehy's been working with the committee or discussing with Pat anyway about creating the survey. And I just want to find out where we are in terms of whether the town has the resource available to help create the survey or is there something that would need to be farmed out?
And so, yes, and that's one of the reasons which segues into the next item. There are some portions of the survey, as Janelle has mentioned, that we're going to need some funding for. That is some of the data analysis. You know, there are people who are specialists in looking at data. Janelle talked about both quantitative and qualitative. We've identified some of those folks. And so we are looking, as our second item, for some funding in FY twenty-two. And what we're asking for at this time, just to kind of put that on the table, is the same $5,000 that we were budgeted in FY twenty-one. We feel like this is, you know, we've been tried to be very frugal with the monies. We've done a lot of the work ourselves, and thank you to Janelle, Aldo, and Chris Hart for a lot of the work that they have done because of their experience in this area. But we really feel like we need to reach out to a couple of more professionals.
And Pat, do you need, just to put a point out, do you need that, that those resources upfront to create the survey? Or is that on the backend once you have the information?
I'll let Janelle answer that.
Okay.
I would say it's more on the backend. I think we are almost nearing the completion of, in terms of the content of the survey. Now, putting it in Google Forms, Mr. Dennehy and his I T department are going to take that on. So that would be the next step. And then, once we get the data, so I do believe that we would need more resources at the backend.
Okay.
Mr. Dennehy has his hand up.
Yes, yeah, and just to answer that, that that work has begun. Alan Bishop, who's our G I S expert for Public Works. We did have the be all end all Google Form in Hillary Wade, who recently departed from the town of Rancho. So Pat and I talked about this. Our current interim I T director is not a Google Form person, but Alan Bishop. Pat sent over the survey to Alan Bishop, and he's in the process of putting it into Google Form. So that that piece should be, should be pretty easy. And then it's just the getting it out to the residents and getting it to the Milton Times. It's a conversation I'm going to have with Elaine Carroll in our weekly briefing.
And so, Madam Chair, if I made the second point I have, on that point, you know, I don't know if we need a motion on this, but but or just to relay the will of the board that Mr. Dennehy use all, all the resources he has to distribute the survey, including but not limited to the email blast and the website, and to see if the Milton Times would do something for us as well. So I can put that in the form of a motion, or we can just express the will of the board that that take place.
Hi, Madam Chair, can I just?
Yes.
Michael for us.
Yes.
So I'm going to make a motion on the $5,000 for tonight, that we appropriate that tonight. So if you want to attach that, if you're all right, Michael, let's attach that to your, I think you want to make as a motion on your previous comments. But to my bigger concern, and this is more for Pat, Mike Dennehy, are you comfortable that these platforms would reach every household in Milton? Because electronically, that's one of the things that we see, like the Town Cork has emails for all town meeting members, and not all, they're like, she has to chase it to get them. Like, are we able to actually get this into every house electronically?
So I think that I'm going to let Mike Dennehy answer that. But Mike is telling me that we have about 11,000 emails for residents. Now, we do not have all of them. And that's why we think that we have to take a multi-tiered approach to answering and to allowing people to access the survey. So part of it is an email blast. Some of it may be just publicizing it in different places, either on the town's social media accounts, the website, and also, you know, through the paper. And also, we plan to contact various groups like churches and other groups so that they could also promote it to them. So we're going to go in a multifaceted way of hopefully ensuring that if you're not in the, if you don't have access to, you know, you don't look at the town website, or we don't have your email that we can get to in other ways. So we hope to get to every resident, but we'll see. And Mike, you might want to answer some of that, too.
No, that, that's perfect, Pat. We have also found success in the superintendent's blast through the Milton Public Schools. We tend to reach another group of people through that. That's a very well-read weekly blast that they put out. So we do, that's another, that's another opportunity. But I think we'll reach out to the Chamber of Commerce. We work well with them, and they can get that out to a lot of their customers that way, who are more often than not residents. So I think the combination of all of it, Mike, I'm not sure if we're going to reach everyone, members of this, but I think we've got a proven record of the ability to get to someone. If we had a little more time, it's probably we could, something we could do as a mass mailing to slip in a bill. But understanding there's some time sensitivity to this and the need to get it back, I think electronically in the form of a Google Form is much more efficient.
If I could suggest, sometimes we make the hard copies available for those that aren't online. So in anything that we advertise, whether it be in the Milton Times or anywhere else, maybe if we have hard copies available at Town Hall, maybe at the libraries, if the forms are available there, then those people who aren't online perhaps could access it that way. In addition, as Pat mentioned.
I think we could definitely do that, Mr. Zulus. And Janelle and Aldo, do you see any issues?
So can I just come back to where I was at? So I'm not sure we need a motion on, I think we can get that all, but you've answered that. But I am going to make a motion on the $5,000, which is FY twenty-two, just to get it out there for purposes of discussion.
I'll second. Thank you.
I saw Arthur's hand up, so Mr. Doyle.
Thanks, I just seconded Richard's motion. And Pat, a question, if I may. Have you yet identified a service provider for the statistical analysis and interpretation of the results?
And Janelle, I think you can answer that. But the short answer is, yes, we have been working with some folks who've been doing, I would say, not necessarily volunteer work for us, but pretty close to volunteer work.
I know that rode well. Thank you, because that's so. And will they have some input into the design format, too, because of the relationship between the two?
Mr. Doyle, yes, we worked initially with a researcher from Salem State University who has given us some initial feedback on the design and the format. And then she would most likely be involved in some of the statistical analysis at the end when we receive the data.
That's great. I've worked with some of the statistical staff at Salem State in the past, and they are excellent. And this part of the work would be in the FY, in the next year's budget for funding.
FY twenty-two, I believe.
Yes.
The motion.
Good, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion for, to approve a $5,000 budget for this project. I think last year, when we set aside $5,000, it came out of the select board budget. Is that correct? Then he sees some people nodding, so I think that was correct. Correct. With that, Mr. Dennehy, would that be the recommended source this year?
We haven't quite identified that yet, but I'm very comfortable with, with, we could use the select board's budget, certainly.
Okay, or the reserve fund, perhaps, if we needed to. Okay, any, any other comments or questions for the committee regarding the funding for the study or the study in general? And if not, we have a motion that's been made and seconded. So all in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, so we've acted on the funding.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. The third item that we have is that our group has been very focused on residents and their opinions. But we understand that there's also an important aspect with the town and its employees. And as Janelle talked about in the survey piece, we've been looking at all, pretty much all of the major town departments to assess kind of residents' attitudes about them. And we would like to, at this point, though, start to engage the town and its employees in terms of actually, you know, starting to grapple with the whole diversity, equity, and inclusion piece. We don't believe that we can do, you know, launch something like that. And we believe that, you know, the department heads with the, under the guidance of Town Administrator Danny Dennehy should be in leadership on that. And so we wanted to make a recommendation for the town to at least start a discussion with Minister Dennehy and the town division heads to see if, how they would start to think about developing a roadmap. We ended up having a couple of conversations with some folk, some consultants who kind of got these two started. And they said, the first thing is to have some discussions with the town and to have that be a facilitated discussion. And so not a commitment or but a plan, but a plan to develop a plan, I would say. And so we wanted to ask permission from the select board to have Administrator Dennehy and lead the town departments through at least that initial process of developing a roadmap around diversity, equity, and inclusion.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Zulus, did you want to speak to that?
I just have a question. So, so Pat, so that would, would that in your mind involve hiring or hiring a consultant or facilitator to help lead that discussion? Go ahead, sir.
Sorry, Mr. Zulus. I think the answer is yes. As we all know, having a conversation about race, equity, diversity is a very difficult conversation. And many times, it comes out as a very punitive process, and it feels punitive to people who are in place. And a number of towns around have gone through this process. And we've talked to a couple of them, other towns, and what they said is the initial step is to bring in a consultant to at least start the conversation. Where that conversation go, and do you need a longer term consultant? That's for, I think, a different discussion. But it's, I believe, relatively short money that you could bring in someone to facilitate, you know, two or three discussions with the town leadership to determine, like, where, how do you start this whole process? And what is right for us as Milton, as opposed to what was right for another town? So yes, I do think that we are recommending that, we don't know how much it would cost because we haven't talked to the consultants, but based upon our conversations, they were saying that it was probably two or three initial meetings. And so it's not like they're, we're committing to a long-term relationship with a consultant.
Okay, Ms. Collins and then Mr. Dennehy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Lattimore, I'm wondering, and you may not have a sense yet, because the survey hasn't come back, and we're just now talking about engaging departments in this work. But I was wondering, it sounds to me as if there would be some initial discussions. And, and then as that data from the survey comes in and the E G A really starts to formulate its recommendations a little more solidly, that those things would sort of dovetail and inform any work that's done at the town level with staff. Is that fair?
That is our intention, and that's why we're trying to do these in concert. The other piece, too, is that, you know, we're asking about town residents about the arms of government. And it's important, I think, for government to be involved in that process, not just us to be throwing things at them, but to actually have them be engaged with the town in terms of what that roadmap forward would be.
Mr., are you finished, Ms. Collins?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, then Mr. Dennehy, and I think Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Pat, and Members Zulus for the question. I thoroughly appreciate and would gladly welcome the support of this board for a subject matter expert or consultant to come in and lead this discussion for me, for us, for the town. I think that's a great suggestion, and I asked the board to support this, this motion this evening.
Okay, Miss, thank you, Mr. Wells.
So, Pat, just a couple of questions. As you know, both on the chief run and during my time as chief, we did a lot of this.
We did.
Facing history in ourselves, N C C J, N C C J. Actually, we actually had a big townwide one, if you remember, we brought in U S D O J, the Bureau of Justice Administration. So you're trying to bring like a consultant like that, but I think if that's what you're going to want to do, and I support this, I think we're going to need more than $5,000, so.
Well, I'm not, this isn't our $5,000.
So we would do this, so, all right, so, okay.
But it's a start. I think that this is a longer term discussion. But I think that one of the things is that the survey data is going to come in. And just as we worked back in the day on some of the. And just as we worked back in the day on some of the issues that came up with various work organizations like the police or whatever, you want to have a two, you know, like somebody's telling you something. And you also want to have somebody who's responding and also telling something back. And so that's our intention, is to create the two halves of this. As opposed to, you know, it's a one-way set of communication. And we've heard that the best practice in other towns has been to start. So with the $5,000 we're asking for, if not that $5,000, what we're saying is, we don't know what that is, but at least start based upon quick conversations. You know that it may be a, you know, a few, a couple of thousand, you know, $2,000 or $3,000 just to get started. And that starting may come up with a big recommendation, which we'll have to talk about at another day.
Second question to Pat, do you have some ideas for Mr. Dennehy on contemporaneously today? Like some of these consultants who would be, that you like, that like jump out at you right away?
I wouldn't say we like, because we haven't done the level of research, but we've talked to a couple of people. The YWCA is an excellent resource, by the way. And for a lot of organizations, been very cost effective. We also know, we've had some conversations with Karen Preval, for example, who came from Cambridge, our town accountant who came from Cambridge. She has worked with a couple of consultants, and she has recommended, and we've talked to a couple of those folks also, just to get a sense about, is this bigger than a bread box kind of a thing? Is it something that's so much money? The initial conversations, the facilitated piece, is not. But what may come out as a recommendation will be more than what we're suggesting right now.
Excellent. All right, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, thank you for everything, Pat.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wells. So I think what we're hearing from the, from our colleagues here on the select board is support for the, for moving forward with such a program. It sounds like we need to get some information on cost. We, we've already approved the $5,000, which will largely, I think, go to the survey. And it's really set aside for this, for the survey that we've already talked about. But for this consultant, for the, developing a roadmap for town departments, it sounds to me as though we're going to be looking for a different consultant, and we'll have a different funding source. And maybe that we need to get some additional information or bring this back for a potential reserve fund transfer, or to ask Mr. Dennehy how to identify some other funds. Mr. Zulus?
If I could just clarify, Madam Chair, I, I think the $5,000 was, was not restricted for use for the survey. I think the $5,000 is for general use.
I agree.
Discretion of the committee. And, and in terms of the, the survey, we may be able, it sounds like we may be able to do that, at least on the front end, create it, prepare it without expending any resources. Although they have, the committee has $5,000 they could spend as they will. It'll be on the back end, as I understood, Ms. Lucas, the back end, the quantitative side, that they may need to hire someone. So that's, I just wanted to clarify, I think the 5K is, is really in the discretion of the committee, as they see it, rather than just the survey.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that, thank you, for that clarification. I think that's right, it sounded to me as though we were expecting that the back end of the survey, the analysis is going to perhaps take much, if not all, of the $5,000, but, but we'll see. So I think we're looking for a different potential funding source for the department head meetings. The, and you, you've already suggested YWCA, or that Karen Preval has recommended some additional facilitators who could help with this particular aspect. So I, I think that we should get some more information, maybe we get a couple of quotes, and we bring it back on a future agenda, sensing that there's a lot of support here for this. Mr. Dennehy has also indicated his support. Mr. Dennehy, you have your hand up.
I, I think it would be prudent, and I don't want to overstep my bounds, but myself, Pat Lattimore, and Karen Preval probably undertake an investigation of some of the subject matter experts in this field and get some prices back to this board at the next meeting. And, and, you know, so we, we can get something going with, with department heads preliminarily, right after Labor Day. And that would be my suggestion.
Okay, that, that's, I think that's a good idea. And the MMA may be a resource for us as well, in terms of recommending a facilitator. Okay, does anyone, yes, Mr. Wells?
Just as well as Maya too. Maya is very proactive in funding issues, you know, progressive agenda issues that you're moving, being very proactive. There could be money there as well, that, that could help start this up. So that's another part that you could look at as well.
Okay, all right. Then I'm not sure we need to take a vote tonight, but I think we have a consensus to move forward with getting the additional information and bringing this back, hopefully on our August 25th agenda.
Did we both, Madam Chair, did we vote the $5,000? I just can't remember, we've talked so much, did we?
I believe we did, I thought, I thought we did. We did vote it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, then do we have anything else from the committee or from the board?
No, we've covered our issues before the board, we're open.
Anyone from the board, anything, anything else before we wrap up? Okay, then thank you very much, Ms. Lattimore, Ms. Lucas, Mr. Guerrero, and all of the members of the committee who are here this evening. We appreciate your time and waiting tonight. It was, it's been a long couple of early agenda items, so thank you for waiting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night. Item seven is a COVID-19 update. We have a couple of different categories, and we're joined by Caroline Cincella, our Public Health Director, and Pat Brawley of the Milton Food Pantry. Ms. Brawley, we have you first as for an update on the food pantry and the Rotary Club's Art Against Hunger program. If you'd like to give us that, and then we'll go to Ms. Cincella. Ms. Brawley, you're, you're on mute.
Yes, we're still operating the food pantry on a pre-packed bag and gift card situation, where we pass out the items to folks outside the church, because the church itself has not yet opened its doors to resumption of activities within. We are hopeful that by the fall, we will be able to return to our choice pantry distribution. And that we won't be doing the pre-packed bags. Right now, we're open twice a month. If we go back to our, our normal routine, we'll be open every Saturday. So we're very much looking forward to that. We are worried, of course, that the Delta variant is going to cause issues again, and that there'll be more restrictions put back in place. But hopefully that won't be the case, and we will be able to, to sally forth. The one, people in Milton and, and the select board, all of you have been so, so generous to the food pantry over the past year and a half with donations. We've been very, very fortunate to have the support we have from the community. We also recently had the Milton Rotary Club set up a special program called Art Against Hunger to raise awareness of hunger, both in Massachusetts and in the Milton Food Pantry, and also in the world. And the competition was an, an opportunity to raise, to invite the schoolchildren of Milton students to buy artwork to decorate a reusable shopping bag. We did have participation from 34 Milton students and selected a winner using a panel of judges, one of whom is the owner, operator of the Milton Art Council. The other is our center, I'm sorry. Also, we had a judge from Cary College and an actual artist who assisted with the selection. So a three-panel jury, judges. And we did have a selection of a seventh grader from Pierce Middle School. Her artwork is on the bag. We had a kindergartner and a fourth grader from St. Agatha's, a kindergartner from Colicott, and a fourth grader from St. Agatha's who placed second and third. This artwork, all of the artwork, is on display at the Wootes Gallery of the Milton Public Library. So please, if you're in that area, take a few moments to walk around and see how the children of Milton have assisted us with trying to raise awareness of hunger as a, as something that they should be working to, to, to stop.
Excuse me, in case anyone missed it, Ms. Collins just demonstrated the, the winning entry. The bag, there it is.
Awesome. Yeah, we're very excited about what happened.
It's going to be on QTV by next week.
It will be on Milton Cable TV also shortly. And we're just very excited about being able to involve the whole community in this project and so many different, touching so many different community avenues to bring, to bring this forward. And Pat Desmond, of course, did a fabulous job with, with reporting on it in the Milton Times, and also in, in encouraging parents and children to get involved. Any donations that are made are going to be split between the Milton Food Pantry and the Rise Against Hunger, which is a, a worldwide initiative that Rotary supports. So we are very thankful to the Rotary Club for working on this project for us. We are hopeful that everyone in Milton now understands how important it is to work to fight hunger in our town, in the, the nation, and nationally. And again, we want to thank everyone who was helpful to us. Anyone who is interested in more information could go to the Milton Rotary Club website and see more info, and also have an opportunity to make a donation. And we thank you all for the opportunity to come tonight and talk.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brawley. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Brawley?
Just thank you for all your reference.
Thank you very much to you, Mr. Doyle. Did you have a question?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Pat, to you and all of the staff at the food pantry, all of the volunteers.
Yeah, it's a hard-working group.
Dedicated group, long-term group, many of them, like yourself. All right, thank you very much for joining us this evening. Next, next we will go to our Health Director, Caroline Cincella. And Ms. Cincella, thank you very much for waiting. It's getting late, and you've been waiting for quite a while, so we appreciate that.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Madam Chair and select board members. I want to give you a report of what is going on in Milton regarding COVID, and also a new state advisory that was updated just on Friday, July 30. I just wanted to highlight two areas of this new advisory regarding face coverings and cloth masks. And now it's been put on the town Milton website. So in light of the information provided by the CDC, and in order to maximize protection vulnerable individuals from the Delta variant, the Department of Public Health now advises that a fully vaccinated person should wear a mask or face covering when indoors, if you have a weakened immune system, or if you are increased risk of severe disease because of your age or an underlying medical condition, or if someone in your household has a weakened immune system, is it increased risk of severe disease? Or is it unvaccinated adults? And another highlight is, for individuals who are not fully vaccinated, it's important that you continue to wear a face covering or mask to help prevent you from spreading COVID-19 to other people. People who show no symptoms of illness may still be able to spread COVID-19. For individuals who are not fully vaccinated, the CDC advises the following. Wear a face covering or mask that covers your nose and mouth. Stay six feet apart from others who don't live with you. Avoid crowds and poorly ventilated indoor spaces. Wash your hands often with soap and water, or use a hand sanitizer if it's not available. Get tested if you've been exposed to or have symptoms associated with COVID-19. So this is a new state advisory that just, as I said, was put out on Friday, and that's on our town website. And you can also find it on mass.gov. And then just to review what's, what we're seeing at the Health Department. So through most of the month of July, we were seeing zero to two cases a day. But now we're seeing two to four cases, and today actually we had four cases. Milton's percent positivity is 1.22% compared to the state percent positivity of 1.46%. So the Milton COVID-19 cases have slightly increased over the last two weeks. In the last two weeks, we've had 31 COVID-19 positive cases. And about half of those cases have been vaccinated for COVID. And we're seeing those breakthrough cases, which according to the interviews that we're conducting with residents, we're hearing from them that they're primarily just having mild symptoms, which is great news, that they've been vaccinated. Unvaccinated COVID-19 cases seem to be having more severe symptoms. In Milton, I'm glad we put, we have over 65% of the population over 12 years of age fully vaccinated. So that's a great number to have, and Massachusetts is up there too, I think at 64, 65%. So the most effective way to decrease disease and death is to get vaccinated. And I'm recommending vaccination. I did stop the daily case count on June 15th, the state of emergency. But I reinstated that now on our website. If you go to the red banner, you can see every day now how much the cases are increasing. You want to follow along with that. So we had another state call again today, and we're just watching all the information closely, all the data that's coming out. And that's changing every day. So we'll be keeping a close eye on the numbers, and I'll be reporting them out daily and just taking our direction from the state. And that's my report.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Cincella. Did you also want to speak to the CARES Act uses, or is Mr. Dennehy going to cover that?
I believe Mr. Dennehy is.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any comments or questions for Caroline Cincella? Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Caroline, as always. Just one question on the breakthrough cases. Are you seeing the breakthrough cases more specific to one vaccine versus the other? Or is it equally across the board with all three, Johnson, Johnson, Pfizer, and Vodno?
We're seeing a little bit more with the Pfizer. But we just have this, we just have a small number, about, you know, 50 cases or so since 15th, as it's starting to, to. So we just have to collect more data and see where that's going.
The second thing, on many of our cases, is the origin, if you're able, on the contact tracing, are they coming from the Cape?
We had a couple of cases from Provincetown. But a lot of times people tell me they don't know where they got the virus.
Thank you, thanks again. Hopefully, this was a quick, this was a quick hiccup, and it goes away sooner versus later.
That'd be nice.
I hear you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Anything else for Ms. Cincella? And if not, I believe Mr. Dennehy wants to address the CARES Act, which is item 7C.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. Last week, we had an internal meeting, Director Cincella was there, Lieutenant Caputo from our local emergency planning commission, Bill Ritchie from Consolidated Facilities, Mike Kelly, our Chief Procurement Officer, and, and many others for that matter. So Finance Director Karen Preval has identified, there's $136,000 of encumbered money. She's working through those encumbrances to see how much of that dollar amount can be freed up. $35,000 of that 136 is leftover money from transformative healthcare, fallen ambulances, COVID testing. As I mentioned last week. Additionally, there's about $369,000 that haven't been encumbered. So if you combine those two numbers, there's roughly $500,000 worth of, of CARES money. Based on the conversations that we have had, and Director Preval spoke to Milton Public Schools today, and they have a couple of requests that I forwarded along to the board today. So approximately $500,000 left in CARES money. Looks like we're, we're really going to need it. My, my gut feeling is that we should begin testing as quickly as possible. I've identified Sunday, August 29th, as a potential starting date, working with transformative healthcare, DPW and the Milton Police Department, if I can secure some funding through the, for the board here tonight. I'd be asking for an additional $150,000. Again, that would give us the ability for another approximately 2,200 tests. Some of the other things that are being requested is Lieutenant Caputo is asking for a trailer. A trailer with shelving is approximately $7,500. That is to store the town's PPE. As I mentioned last week, also, you know, we had a tough time securing PPE after the, the beginning of the pandemic. And then places to store it also became an issue. So Chief King, Chief Madden, Director Cincella, the library, town hall, Consolidated Facilities, identified a multitude of town departments that would be in need of replenishing PPE. So from a town's. from a town's perspective, we're looking towards securing enough PPE that we can keep an inventory on hand after December 31st, which is now allowable under the CARES Act, to my knowledge. Additionally, Bill Ritchie had talked about improving the HVAC system at Town Hall, the system that was built quite some time ago and has outlasted itself. He's put a price tag on that of approximately $100,000. Two items that were identified today from from the schools and I'd have to let them speak to that are some desktop units for teachers and some more Chromebooks. And those approximately come to the tune of $200,000. So I think if you take a look at my quick discussion and quick math, that that gets us nearly to or just somewhere near the $500,000 that we have left in the care. So my my time sensitivity one is is to get the testing underway. That would be my my first priority at this time to get that first test available on August 29th. It's the Sunday before school comes back. And then we do need some lead time with PPE and trailers and Chromebooks and desktops. If that's the route that the schools want to go to. I know that's a quick overview, but I'll take any questions or comments you might have. And again, I want to I want to thank Caroline and all the department heads for revisiting this in such a timely manner.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Dennehy. Any Ms. Collins has her hand up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Dennehy, did Mr. Ritchie have some idea as to the cost of the improvements or the upgrade to the town's HVAC?
He probably put that at $100,000. So it'd be $100,000 for the HVAC, $150,000 for COVID testing, approximately $200,000 for the preliminary school asks, approximately $7,500 for a 30-foot trailer. And, you know, Caroline, you might know better than me, probably another $40,000 worth of PPE to put in that to make sure that the town has has an ample supply. We did talk about things like refrigerators. Refrigerators were in high demand and short supply last year, but I think Caroline, you can talk to that. I think you're in a good place with respect to refrigerators. Okay.
We purchased a refrigerator at the beginning of the pandemic. It's in good shape.
Yeah. So just the the aggregate of that is 500. It might not work out exactly correct and we may have to trim some stuff off of it, but those are the priorities at this point in time. Understanding that, you know, we're not sure what's what's ahead of us. But to Caroline's point, the the virus is is in our community and I think we need to take steps to mitigate that.
Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Dennehy and Caroline, I would absolutely prioritize anything that you're going to do pursuant to preparing yourself for the next episode of this app. As you know, Caroline, the van that the trailer that we secured 10 years ago off the bridge, most people didn't even know you had that and that it didn't, it didn't last long, but it was something you had to go to right away. So I think it's very prudent of Lieutenant Caputo to make it a suggestion to add a second trailer. And the other thing too is getting yourself whatever PPE you're going to need to get us through this next winter. It'd be a priority to me right now getting moving forward. So I hope Mr. Dennehy will have a number for us, a true number for us on our next meeting.
Yeah, yes. I can certainly do that. I think I think tonight I would be looking for approval for the testing so that I can get that, you know, get that underway and line that up and let the public know that that we'll be opening up the public workshop on that Sunday.
What's the dollar amount for that one for that for the August testing?
I'd ask for 150,000. That would bring our total up to 185,000 and afford us the ability for 2,200 tests. And the idea wouldn't be to run it every Sunday. It would be, you know, on on special occasions. We we maximized our efforts last year before and after the holidays, before school and return to school events. So just thinking outside the box, it would be August 29th and then maybe a week or two before the holidays and then in between the holidays and then shortly after the holidays, understanding that we need to spend that money by by New Year's Day.
Mr. Dennehy, before you do that, Mr. Wells, right now, this is on our agenda as a COVID-19 update and we have CARES Act in uses. I just want to be sure that we're, you know, that we're whether we can act on this under this agenda item or whether we need to do this at a future meeting. Mr. Dennehy, do you have $35,000 left over from unexpended from the prior testing that's available for August 29?
That is correct. Yep.
And do you think you need more than that for August 29?
Sorry, Madam Chair. That would afford us a little over 400 tests. So I think transformative and Fallon Ambulance could could work through something with this board. We do meet on the 25th, which would be prior to.
Right, that's, yeah. That's what I'm thinking. We meet on the 25th, but we're also going to be setting up a special meeting for the American Rescue Plan Act funds and that would be another opportunity to take a vote that night. My sense and let's see what the other members think, but my sense is we could at least say that we want to prioritize this. We'd like you to go ahead and start making the arrangements for the 29th. You have $35,000 available. I think we could take a vote on a specific amount at a future meeting along with some of these other items so that it's actually on the agenda as an approval of for funding, you know.
Certainly. No.
And the Finance Committee may want to weigh in as well on that, but it they may already have taken this topic up, but I think we can at least give a sense to the town administrator we want, whether we want him to move forward with this to start getting, whether it's a new contract or an amended contract in place with transformative and use the $35,000 that's already been approved.
I agree.
Sound agreeable?
Yeah. The Select Board Finance Committee, if I may, Madam Chair's meeting next Tuesday. So that would be something I could present more formally after speaking with each of the department heads and quantifying qualifying all the priorities.
So I think, Mr. Wells, you indicated you want to make a motion.
I will draw the motion, Madam Chair. As long as you get through the 29th, I'm okay with that. We can do it at a later date.
Okay. Or I was going to say, if you wanted to make a motion just to, you know, authorize the town administrator to sign a contract if necessary with transformative or begin the preparations for conducting the testing on the 29th of August.
So I'll make that motion for conducting the testing on August 29th to begin negotiations with Fallon Transformer.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. Do we have any discussion? Not all in favor. Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay. Then why don't we put this on the agenda for some of these future items that you've already talked with us about tonight for a vote for funding at the at a subsequent meeting?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Members of the Board.
Thank you, Mr. Dennehy. Thank you, Ms. Cincella.
Good night, Caroline. Thank you.
Good night.
Okay, we're up to item number eight and it's 9:15. We'll try to move really quickly here. September 11th, 2020, the anniversary observance. We had a discussion about this at our last meeting and Mr. Doyle and I were charged with starting to begin to make some, doing some inquiries and making some plans for this, for the observance coming up on the September the 11th. Susie Stewart, who had suggested at our last meeting that we might want to have a blood drive or a charitable component to the observance and has obtained some more information for us and also a tentative date with Dana Farber for Blood Mobile. That could be a town hall on September the 9th. I think that information I think was forwarded to everyone today and Mr. Doyle or Mr. Dennehy or Susie could feel free to weigh in. I, you know, Susie, we appreciate your work putting this together. The tentative plan subject to the board's discussion and approval tonight would be for the Blood Mobile to be probably at the front of Town Hall on September the 9th, which is a Thursday. Tendative hours, noon time until 6:30 PM, with the idea being that we don't want it to be too early in the morning so that we can at least capture, the earliest they could come out would be 8:00 AM. And we'd like to be able to at least capture not only town employees or people who are working from home or retirees, but anyone who might be coming from work who'd like to come in after work and donate blood. So the thinking was 12 to 6:30 would be some good hours for that. They would also want us, Dana Farber would handle all of the preparations, prepare the flyers. They would want us to provide a name for the event. Something like Milton 9/11 Anniversary Blood Drive, something along those lines. And they'd be looking to us. The only thing that the town would have to provide would be a volunteer to staff a desk to direct people to the Blood Mobile at the be, when people arrive. But other than that, the Dana Farber would handle all of the arrangements and there'd be no cost to the town. So that might be, Susie Stewart has already volunteered to help with that and perhaps to see if further town employees would be interested in helping, maybe members of our board or other volunteers would be interested in signing up to help for an hour to direct people to the blood drive at the front, at the desk. So that's, that is one component of the observance. The second that we talked about at our last meeting was whether to hold an event on Friday, September 10th as an evening vigil or to do something on Saturday morning. There was a fair amount of interest in doing something Friday evening as a vigil. When Mr. Doyle and Mr. Dennehy and Ms. Stewart and I spoke this morning, we had some ideas about obtaining police and fire color guards, reaching out to the clergy association, which we've done and they're very interested in taking part and perhaps even helping plan the vigil. The thought was it could be a candlelight vigil since if we have it at seven o'clock in the evening, sunset is just about at that time. So we could do a candlelight event. We might want to reach out to the two churches to see if we could bring the steeplebells, have a couple of speakers. The thought was maybe the event could be about an hour in length. And we wanted to present those boards, those ideas to the board tonight for consideration. See what else the other members thought about September 9th and September 10th. And in this, if we would do something on Friday night, we would be not doing anything Saturday morning, but we know that there are a lot of state and federal anniversary observances being planned for Saturday morning. Now, we nothing that the town does would interfere with people watching or going to a state observance. Mr. Doyle, do you want to add anything or Mr. Dennehy?
I think, Madam Chair, you eloquently covered all of the bases. I didn't see anything in my notes that you didn't touch upon.
Madam Chair.
Dennehy.
Thank you, Vice Chair Doyle. Madam Chair, I did reach out to both Chief Madden and Chief King and both of their color color guards would gladly be in attendance on September 10th.
That's great.
What do the members think about those tentative plans? We'd like to try to book the Dana Farber for the Blood Mobile tomorrow if there's agreement tonight that this would be part of our Milton observance.
Do you need a motion for this, Madam Chair, or just a consensus?
I think we could do it just on a consensus or we could do a motion to schedule the Blood Mobile.
I'd make a motion to schedule the Blood Mobile for the
September 9th.
September 9th and I was, I agree with you. I think as Susie knows, those dates go quick. So if you can book that tomorrow, I think that's a good thing. Madam Chair, the only other thing I would, I'll come back to that. So that's my motion. Second.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes.
It does need a name. And if I can just say, the name will be plastered on all of the marketing materials. So whatever we do choose to name the Blood Mobile, they do email blasts and they send us posters that we can use at the Town Hall and you know, just to promote our, our, you know, 9/11 observance. So it is important that whatever we do choose to name this event, we choose wisely.
Does anyone on the board have a preference for the name?
I think you're going the right way. I think, you know, 9/11, the September 11th Memorial Blood Drive, something like that is fine. I think that's. I think that speaks right to the point.
Yeah. Should we, do we want to have the word Milton in there?
Right. I think it's important to say Milton.
Would it be open to non-Milton residents as well? Oh, yeah, I think, because
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because they fill those spots. You can go online. I give, I'm due next week. You go online and they put the spots up. Whoever grabs them grabs them.
Yes, it would be open to the general public, but it it'd be part of Milton's observance.
Right.
Ms. Collins, did you have something?
I think all these plans sound wonderful and I appreciate everybody's advance thinking and I'm happy to do what I can to help.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Wells?
Just one thought. And I could possibly do this, you could think about it. You don't have to answer me now, but I could possibly arrange to have one of the first responders from that day come and speak that night here in Milton, if you want to. I just want to, I would want to do that sooner versus later.
What's the sense of the board? You're referring to someone from the New York Fire Department or Police Department?
NYPD, oh, yeah. One of the other. I have a couple in mind. I know I've already heard speak previously that are very, very eloquent, very.
I would be open to that, although I mentioned to Mr. Doyle and Mr. Dennehy and Ms. Stewart this morning, just my own personal view that it's important that we recognize the first responders, the police and fire who lost their lives on 9/11, but there was also an awful lot of ordinary heroes who lost their lives. So I think we'd want to balance it's that we'd we'd be paying it, you know, due respect to both, just the general public that were the innocent people who were who were who were killed that day as well as the police and fire who lost their lives. So I I'm open to that idea, Mr. Wells. I think we might want to just make sure that we're targeting a message to both groups.
Oh, as one who's, you heard me mention, I spent a lot of time there in those three months. Believe me, they talk about everything. They were the ones who spent weeks and months digging through that rubble, recovering all those victims, not just police officers, but all of the victims who were lost. So I think, as I said, having been there, I think most people would have a great appreciation to hear from someone who is there on those first moments in those days and understands it perspective that you and I don't. But it's up, you guys have to tell me now, but I wouldn't want to wait too long.
Yeah, let's get what the sense of the board is. I mean, I'm not, I'm certainly open to it. Everyone probably has a personal story from 9/11. So there's a lot of, yeah, I'm not aware of any, anyone from Milton who was directly impacted on that day, but there are certainly people who had friends and family members who had some impact. Ms. Collins and then Mr. Doyle.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was wondering if Micah might be very helpful in providing that that balance of painting a picture of the many different kinds of people who, you know, were were involved, either those who lost their lives, but but also those who who came to help.
Micah is very interested in putting the vigil together. Pastor Shelley responded. Bringing in some of the additional clergy members into the email and also offering up any assistance that they could provide. And they also, she also liked the idea of the Blood Mobile. Why don't we take a vote on the on the Blood Mobile motion since that that was pending and then we want to the vigil? I think that was made and seconded to go ahead on September 9th and we just need to come up with the name. We're going to add Milton to the name. So all in favor of the motion to approve the Blood Mobile plans for September 9th. Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
And myself, yes. And thank you to Susie Stewart for all of your work, putting that together. Mr. Doyle?
Madam Chair, I'd like to go to, which is a good recommendation to say that I think this would be not only important for everyone, but particularly important for the younger people. We have a lot of people who weren't born there.
Yeah.
And having someone with that presence and experience, being able to speak to them and educate them would be extremely important from my perspective. I think it's an excellent idea.
Is everyone comfortable with Friday night versus Saturday morning? Okay, see agreement on that. Okay, any other thoughts for the for the evening? Everyone comfortable with inviting, with Richard reaching out to his contact, inviting a New York police officer or a New York firefighter who could speak to the events of that day? Okay. Then do we have a motion?
You want to make a motion for that?
We're just to approve
The vigil?
The the plans for the observers. I think it could also be perhaps delegated to Mr. Doyle and me to to work with the clergy association and others. Kevin Cook, our Veterans Agent, has expressed an interest in helping. The police and fire have expressed an interest. So I think we could put together a couple, a few people, probably mainly town employees, a member of the board, the clergy association to work together to come up with a program. to work together to come up with a program.
I'll make a motion to delegate to Ms. Conlon and Mr. Doyle. The charge of finalizing the plans for a nine 11 more memorial vigil along the lines of what we've discussed this evening, including Mr. Wells's suggestions, suggestion.
Seconded by Ms. Collins, then all in favor. Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus? Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, thank you, everyone. The next item on our agenda is a discussion of, the way we put it on the agenda was discussion of town council services and fees and select board's response to a recent letter to the editor printed in the Milton Times regarding town council services and fees. And I put this on the agenda so that we could have a discussion. I, I'd like to seek the board's authorization to respond to the letter to the editor in the Milton Times on behalf of the board, rather than just responding in my individual capacity. I think it's important for the board to clarify some information regarding town councils fees and appointment and invoices and what the retainer is and what it is. And I think there may be some confusion in the public. And so I'd like to clarify a few things. The letter in particular relates to the retainer and the, you know, retainer is really a, almost a misnomer. It is a term that's used by municipalities, but it's really a flat fee. And the town council's flat fee is something that we've already spoken of at our last meeting when we submitted a warrant article to increase the retainer for the current fiscal year, which is something that had been requested a couple of years ago. We did not increase it for budgetary purposes, but what we've been finding in the past year is that town council is spending an awful lot of time on public records requests, which has really made the, the flat fee that's paid to town council a very low realization rate for town council. They're, they're spending a significant, significant amount of time, but not being paid anymore for it. So they're really receiving an hourly rate that is extremely low for the work that they're doing. And I think we need to clarify that for the viewing pub, for the people who have read the letter to the editor may be confused about how town council is engaged and how town council is paid. So I think what would, what would be important would be to clarify for readers the two major components of town, of the law budget, which are the retainer or the flat fee, as well as professional and special services, which covers things outside of general town council day to day advice. Is, is everyone in this board knows that the general town council work and advice to boards and committees that, that the towns outside of our firm does is a significant amount of their time. It's really, the, the flat fee has been really a great deal for the town, but it's become even more of a great deal for the town because of the amount of work that's being done and charged under it. Town council was appointed by a prior select board long before many of us, long before any of us were on the board or had any real involvement in town government back in the late 1980s. And we've had a longstanding relationship between Milton and town council, which is Murphy, Hesse, Toomey and Lahein. The board appoints town council. We have a fee letter that governs town council's services, but it's all subject to town meeting appropriation. And I did try to explain some of that through a series of emails that I had from the letter writer. But you know, it's, it's something that we're very familiar with, but something that the general public is not necessarily familiar with. And the word retainer itself, people have a different understanding of that in other law practices than in the municipal practice where it's really a flat fee. So I think there's some important things that we need to clarify. And I'd like to get the board's authorization to submit a response on behalf of the board. I have not drafted anything yet. I thought I should come to the board first and see what, see whether the members were interested in authorizing me to do that. And if so, to get that authorization this evening. Mr. Zulus?
I'll move to delegate to the chair, the responsibility to prepare a response to the letter to the editor regarding town council services.
That's second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. Before we go to a vote, and if anyone else has any other questions, we will get to them. Last week, Mr. Doyle had asked for some additional information, wanted to know how much time is being spent on public records requests. And we have received that information in fiscal year nineteen, fiscal year 2019, about forty seven and a half hours were spent on public records requests in fiscal 2020. Six hundred and forty three hours were spent on public records requests. So that shows the significant increase. And that's a large part of the reason that the realization rate on the flat fee invoices is so low. Now, in one of the prior years, you know, in fiscal 2018, there was, there was also a significant amount of public records request, but it was 234 hours. So it's still considerably less than, than what we've spent in, what town council has spent and really not been adequately paid for in FY 2020 because it all falls under the flat fee. Town council had also provided as the amount of hours that's been covered under the flat fee in recent years. And it varies. It varies from year to year because sometimes there's zoning articles or there's other issues that boards and committees are dealing with. It's not only public records. There's a lot of other components to the flat fee as well, but it can vary a lot from year to year. And in fiscal 2018, they, town council spent about fourteen hundred hours under the flat fee. In fiscal 19, it dropped back down to nine hundred and eighty one hours. And in the last fiscal year, fiscal 2020, town council spent approximately sixteen hundred hours that were billed under the flat fee. So it's, it's become a very unjust situation in which town council is being paid really significantly less than a hundred dollars an hour, in some cases as low as forty dollars an hour for all the work that's being done. And it's, it's important that that I think that the residents understand that the town is receiving a, a great amount of service under this flat fee. And town council has, and his colleagues have John Flynn for many years and more recently Kevin Freitag and a lot of their colleagues whom we're all familiar with, have served the town well over the years. And I think that's important that the select board, as the board that appoints town council, bring that out and explain, explain the appointment process, explain the invoices. So I appreciate that motion being made and seconded. Does anyone have any other comments this evening? On this item? Mr. Zulus?
I just have a question, Madam Chair, just following up on some of the information you just provided. Just, and you may not know this, but does town council have the information? Of the six hundred and forty three hours that town council spent in 2020 responding to public records requests, does town council know how many requesters that covered?
Uh, we didn't ask for that specifically, Mr. Doyle, just asked for the total numbers, but you know, there's as I said to the warrant committee last night, there's a lot of public records requests that are in the nature of a motor vehicle accident report or a birth certificate. Town council's not involved in any of those. There's a, there's a, there's a large number of records requests that require reviews for redaction, for attorney client privileges, for privacy issues. So there's a lot of there are a lot of public requests coming from a fairly small number of people, but it's, that, that is what's town council's involved in. It is not the ordinary copy of something that's pretty straightforward, such as a motor vehicle accident report that the police department handles routinely or that the town clerk's office handles. Ms. Collins and Mr. Doyle?
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I don't know how much space you're, you're going to have to, to make your comments, but it seems to me that there might be a little confusion around the way that, that we work with town council or contract for town council versus maybe some, some other kinds of contracts, which we're required to you know, go out through regular procurement channels for. And I don't know if there's an opportunity to explain the difference.
Did you want me to add that town council services are not subject to the procurement laws?
I, I, I think that might be important because that, that seems to be, that, that was, that was a takeaway from
I agree.
Yeah, the, the letter, that was the sense that, that I got, that there was confusion there and that perhaps the, the state just you know, it's not their business to explain those things to people, I guess.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's important that we explain the appointment process and the fee letter up and then the, and then the budget appropriation process, which is how Milton, over the past thirty plus years, has handled legal services is through an appointment by the board and fee requests from town council and then the town meeting appropriation. Okay, so if we have no other, just Mr. Doyle, did you have something?
Yes, Madam Chair, I just wanted to suggest emphasizing as much financial benefit and financial impact in the responses possible, both positive and negative. And also let you know that I've amended my earlier request for information to ask for it for the first six months of the current fiscal year as well.
Okay. Okay, then if we have nothing else, why don't we vote on the motion? Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, next, we have two sets of appointments next. The first one is the community preservation committee, and I'm going to go to Mr. Doyle for that, for a report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To review of the proposed community preservation committee appointment recommendations, follow the Article 1 CPC bylaw adopted by the February twenty second, two thousand twenty one special town meeting and approved by the Office of the Attorney General in June. Six appointees who identified for three-year terms for the membership of the conservation commission, the historical commission, the planning board, the park and recreation, the housing authority in the affordable housing trust with three members to be appointed by the select board, one for an initial term of two years and two for an initial term of one year each. Recommendations for the three select board appointments were drawn from interested members of the community who submitted a town of Milton volunteer application. Allison Quinn of the planning office, who has CPC experience from her previous position as an operations manager in the city of Boston, and I was charged with, by the SB select board, would bring forward these recommendations. We are grateful to all who submitted a volunteer application. As part of the process, the CPA project database provided by the community preservation coalition was accessed to fully understand the types of projects approved over time by communities to match the backgrounds and expertise for such projects. Also, the candidates were reviewed in the context of the roles of the six designated CPC members, such as Wendy Gapo of the conservation commission, was a member of Milton's open space committee as well. Also, three of the designees are current town meeting members. If the SB appoints, appointments are approved, who will be a fourth? Noting that one of those members is an ex附Q member because he's chair of the park and recreation department. With a solid candidate pool, a check was made with section five of chapter forty four B of the master laws to see if there was provision for alternate membership, but no such provision was found. However, should there be any vacancies among the select board appointees, there are serious candidates in the pool to succeed or consideration by the select board. Again, a thank you to Allison Quinn for her work. It was a pleasure to collaborate with her.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Doyle. So we have nine appointees, six of whom are designated by other boards and committees.
Madam Chair, if I might.
Ms. Collins, yes.
Are you ready to entertain a motion?
Sure.
Okay. I move to appoint to the conservation preservation committee the following members, Joseph Duffy.
Preservation. Sorry, that's an incorrect word there.
Sorry. Joseph Duffy of Sixth Westborne Street, O'Donnell, twelve Belcher Circle, Peter Carroll, seventy three Clap Street, Wendy Garpo of eleven Brandon Road, number two, and the Weld of two sixty seven Adams Street, Robert Leavash of five eighty five Brush Hill Road, Peter Jackson of fourteen Caven Street and Jenny Russell of one ninety Central Avenue. All two three, two, three-year term expiring on July thirty first, twenty twenty four. Tom Callahan of sixteen Orin Street, three-year term expiring on July thirty first, twenty twenty two.
Um, I think that's actually, I think that's an early draft of the motion, but I think it's been replaced.
I, I was going to say those terms are not correct.
Yeah, I, I think we had a, we had a revised, I'm just trying to try to pull it up.
Okay.
I think we had a revised draft and it may not have made it into the package.
Okay, well, then somebody else should, should then, my apologies, should make or correct the motion with friendly amendment.
So I'll offer a amendment. I have, I have a I, I hope this is up to date. I have Duffy Callahan, O'Donnell, Carroll, Garpo and Weld with three-year terms.
Right.
For all the appointees to the other, from the other commissions and boards.
Right.
Leavash for a one-year term, Jackson for a two-year term and Russell for a one-year term? Is that correct?
That's what I have.
Is that correct, Mr. Doyle?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So why don't we offer that as a friendly amendment to Ms. Collins's motion?
Go offer it.
I accept that.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right. And for the record, the names didn't change there. It's just a matter of the terms being clarified. Okay, motion is made and seconded. Do we have any other discussion? If not, all in favor. Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes, and thank you, Mr. Doyle.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. And I agree. Thank you to Mr. Doyle. He had a lot of applicants to choose from. So thank you to you and Ms. Quinn for all of your efforts to put this slate together. The next item is an appointment to the local emergency planning committee. We have quite a few names. This is an annual appointment. Many of them are town employees.
So, so I'll make a motion to appoint the, the following members to the local emergency planning committee with terms expiring on July thirty first, two thousand twenty two. Paige A. Ippolito, Thomas McCarthy, Paul Hopkins, Robert E. Mallett, Joseph Prondact, Prondact, William F. Ritchie, CPE LCS, John E. King, Lieutenant Charles Caputo, Brian Linehan, Buddy McDermott, Mark Williams, Michael D. Dennehy, Caroline A. Kinsella, Nancy J. Bersani, Chase J. Berkeley, Tim Zerwinski and Christopher Madden.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Doyle. Any discussion?
Just a friendly amendment, those, just that there will be to reappoint. They're all the existing members who were reappointed.
And, and I think there were, we were checking on, we may have a subsequent meeting, a couple more appointments because I think we don't have the hospital or the Milton Academy.
Yes.
So so Jennifer McCullough was checking on some of those. So all right, so this motion has been made and seconded. It's the majority of the committee, primarily town employees.
And it's a friendly amendment.
Thank you.
Okay.
Being adopted by the second.
Okay, that's good to know. All right, then if no other discussion, all in favor. Mr. Doyle? Mr. Zulus?
Pardon me, yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes, a little historical fact that this committee was created five days after nine 11, twenty years ago. The direct result of the tax.
Okay, that's good to know. Ms. Collins, you, you are the next agenda item, a report on the affordable housing trust and housing committee year in review and upcoming activities.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to acknowledge that it's quarter to ten and I have a rather lengthy report. So if, if, if you would like, I can dispense with with thank yous and some preliminary explanation and cut to the chase of action, which is still kind of long. I clocked it out at about thirteen minutes. Would you like the shorter version? And I will make sure that the longer report goes up on the housing committee webpage and, and is sent to all of you.
I, I think that's a good idea, Ms. Collins, and I apologize for that, but you know, Judy Barrett's presentation took a while, but it was important and we had, we had a lot of important items on the agenda this evening. So maybe we could divide it up and come back with a subsequent update as we go through the year.
That, that, that's quite all right. I, all these things are very important that we're doing and I appreciate everybody's work. I so I'm going to skip through all the thank yous and also the charges and, and it's sort of cut to the chase on the housing production plan. And, and it's sort of cut to the chase on the housing production plan. Ms. Kramer, who's the chair of the Affordable Housing Trust, couldn't be with us this evening. But, but she's, she's very present here in, in the work, so as are everyone in the Affordable Housing Trust and the Housing Committee. So since the housing production plan was accepted by the Department of Housing and Community Development, both COVID-nineteen and eight Chapter Forty-B comprehensive permit projects have negatively impacted the town's capacity to plan for and develop affordable housing as a local initiative. Despite this, the Housing Committee and the Affordable Housing Trust have met fifteen times in twenty twenty and nine times in twenty twenty-one. Yes, it's been that long since you've had a report from us, resulting in the following activities categorized by the following housing production plan strategies: zoning, capacity building, production, and preservation. So zoning. And we're all aware of all the exciting things that have been happening in the zoning, zoning world as led by the Planning Board. But in the winter of twenty twenty, the trustees and members of the Housing Committee studied accessory dwelling unit condominium conversion and inclusionary development program zoning. We provided feedback to the Planning Board as zoning for ADUs, condominium conversion, and the Milton Village Mixed-Use Planned Unit Development Overlay District were developed. Julie Kramer delivered the proposal for inclusionary development program in Milton Village Overlay Zoning to the Planning Board. This was included in the zoning. And I delivered the related remarks in a public education webinar preceding the July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty special town meeting, at which the zoning was passed onto production. Church Street units, as you know, select board actually recently signed paperwork necessary for two off-site affordable homeownership units to be accepted by DHCD. And these units were required under the special permit related to Milton Woods, the subdivision developed by Polty Homes. These units are located in a two-family home on Church Street. And along with the Planning Department, Julie Kramer and Tom Callahan worked with DHCD to negotiate with the developer to produce units in good condition that would really serve current and future owners well. And this included a contribution to condominium, the condominium trust, and a contribution of the sale proceeds, net sale proceeds, to the Affordable Housing Trust. And the proceeds have been received and accepted by our board as well. During spring and summer of twenty twenty-one, we also met with Northland, which is developing Walcott Woods on two of their six required off-site units. Again, required by the special permit that allowed for their PUD. Subsequently, a small group inspected the property with Ms. Quinn, and Ms. Quinn and Ms. Kramer developed basically a very detailed report about renovations and clarifications needed on the property. And then we actually went out and got a third-party inspector. I should say Ms. Quinn did this. She's just been amazing. And we've continued to work with Northland in order to make sure that these are the highest quality units that we can, we can have produced so that our future owners are set up really well. I, I do want to note that cannibalization that of towns' existing housing stock occurs every time something like this happens to produce off-site units, particularly scarce rental units, which are often converted to condominiums. So this dynamic and the need to achieve and maintain compliance with the SHI, that's the ten percent compliance that, that we're required to have under Chapter Forty-B, indicates the need for inclusionary development program zoning, which the Housing Committee will likely recommend to the Planning Board in FY twenty-three. Municipal and state-owned parcels. Towards the latter part of twenty twenty, Ms. Quinn assembled a comprehensive list of parcels and their known natural and legal features, which we began to look at. Master Plan Implementation Committee took the lead in fleshing out additional detail, and we, they, they worked with the town's conservation agent and also Conservation, Conservation Commission Chair John Kieran, and thank you, Mister Doyle. The trustees and the housing members met with Master Plan Implementation Committee recently to review the findings and chart next steps. And these next steps potentially include continued discussions with Parks Department by the Planning Department, outreach by the Select Board and Housing Committee on Granite Ave Parcels, planning works such as engineering, wetlands, utility, topographical geological surveys commissioned by the Planning Department, and test fit analyses by MPEC. And we also met with developer Michael Moore, architect Tony Shu of Finegold, Alexander Architects, and attorney Marion McEttrick on four forty Granite Avenue. They gave us a presentation, and I've put a link to that presentation in this report. And the Housing Committee voted to, to support the concept as it meets many or several goals in the Housing Production Plan and Master Plan, both of which we are charged with trying to, to support and help forward. So as mentioned previously, the town's capacity concentrate on production's been severely hampered during the pandemic and the extended spate of Forty-B activity. During the course of twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, the trustees and members offered comments on all eight applications to mass housing seeking approval for site eligibility under Chapter Forty-B comprehensive permit. And these projects, along with potential eligible units produced through other means, could produce up to three hundred and eighty-six of the five hundred and nineteen estimated rental home and homeownership units required to meet the town's ten percent affordability threshold required under Chapter Forty-B. Of these one hundred and thirty-six units could be produced. And it's important to remember that the census will likely increase the need, number of units needed, making it even more critical that the town uses any safe harbor period to produce units itself in conjunction, conjunction with trusted partners such as nonprofit developers and civic groups. And to this end, the Housing Committee will continue to focus on the parcel list, while the Affordable Housing Trustees will focus on plans for conservation, preservation projects. There's a lot left, and I see that it's nine fifty-five. I have capacity building and preservation left. If you'd like, we could move that to a subsequent meeting. Would that be, would that be agreeable to you?
Right, that sounds good to me, and I see Arthur with thumbs up, so.
Okay, okay.
And others nodding.
A lot of information, and, and I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't have time to prepare slides. That may have made it a bit more digestible as well, but, but I'll, I'll, I'll put a line there and, and also I'll get it up on, on the Housing Committee website.
Well, and it just goes to show all the work that's really taking place on housing, you know. The Forty-Bs tend to dominate a lot of the discussion, but there's, there's a lot of good work going on with the Housing Committee, the Housing Trust, the Master Plan Committee. There, there's just so many people who are doing good efforts, and, and I, the amount of work that I think it was Julie and Kathleen, Julie Kramer, Kathleen O'Donnell, Tom Callahan, put in just to get those two units on Church Street in, in the best state possible and in the best deal for the town. It really was a, a lot of work and a great effort. So thank you, Ms. Collins. We'll, we'll continue your report at a future meeting, maybe on the twenty-fifth.
Thank you. I, I would really appreciate that, and I would encourage everyone and residents to, to read this report because it names all the members. And also, you know, it talks specifically about some, some new and exciting work by our resident representative on the Housing Committee, Dania Raphael. And she has expertise that none of us had, so, so we've been really fortunate, but, but it talks about all these individual contributions too. So thank you.
Well, I mean, we need to thank you for all of your leadership in the housing area. You've, you've been working very hard since you came on the board on this topic. We all recognize that. Mister Doyle?
You took the words out of my mouth, Madam Chair, leadership, and also the fluency of Belinda and Cheryl. How they keep track of this and they communicate it is admirable.
I agree. All right, thank you, Ms. Collins. We're on to item thirteen, which is the Town Administrator's Report. Mister Dennehy?
I don't have a report this week, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Chair's report, I do not have a report this evening. Members' reports, does anyone, Mister Doyle, do you have a report?
No, I'll join Mister Dennehy. He gets a gold star. I'll take the silver one, maybe bronze.
Okay, Mister Zulus?
I get the bronze.
Okay, Ms. Collins?
No report, thank you.
Mister Wells?
No, Madam Chair, I just want to help Mister Zulus get the better of the appropriate time tonight.
All right, no reports this evening. It's getting late. Public comment response, anyone? Seeing none?
Well, I, I just, just for the record.
Mister Zulus?
Yeah, I apologize. Just very quickly for the record, I, I just, you alluded, Madam Chair, to some of the, some of the things in the response to the letter to the editor that we have to do. I, I just have, have to say in, in response to some of the public comment, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm just not, I'm not aware of what these quote-unquote problems are with town council. And, and two, I, I think there's a, a misapprehension about who responds to public records requests. There was a statement that the select board's response to the public records requests, the select board doesn't respond or nor does it have the authority, the responsibility to respond to public records requests. It is the public records custodian. We simply respond to inquiries from the public records custodian to collect documents, and then we do it. We give it to the public records custodian. And then it's the custodian with help from town council who responds to those requests. And so it is, it is town council and our public records custodian who have been burdened by the surfeit of public records requests over the last year or two and, and not the select board. So anyway, just to, just to clarify a couple of those points. And, and one, one final thing, there was, there was a suggestion that the, the, the public records are a quote-unquote mess. I mean, the, the fact that a public records request results in, in, in a mess in response, quote-unquote, doesn't mean that the public records or that the records of the town are a mess. It just means that the, may mean, may mean that the response to the request results in a quote-unquote mess, if indeed that's the case. So that's all, just a couple of clarification points.
Okay, did anyone have anything else? If not, we'll go on to future agenda items. We are going to try to schedule a meeting for the American Rescue Plan Act funds. Probably at this point, the best way to handle that would be for everyone to try to give some dates to Susie Stewart that were available over the next couple of weeks. We, we want to have that prior to the twenty-fifth. Anyone have any future agenda items? Yes, Mister Zulus?
Madam Chair, that would be a, a public hearing where we could get some feedback from the citizens for the, for the, the ARPA recommendations.
Okay, and it would probably be a limited agenda item. We, that would, we might have to add one or two items, but primarily it would be for that purpose.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Mister Dennehy?
I have two items, Madam Chair. We have some MWRRA bonds that treasurer would like to bring to us for the board's authorization, and I have been invited as a stakeholder to sit on a panel for Blue Hills Regional Technical High School's S R two funding. They're putting together a committee to, to try to plan the best way to spend S R two with these restrictions that are involved in that, so I'm just looking for approval from this board to join them.
Okay, so maybe i- is August twenty-fifth too late for that?
If we could do it at an earlier meeting, that, that would be great. I'm, I'm trying to get a timeline from Joe Rosetti, the superintendent over, over at Blue Hills.
Okay, great. Well, that sounds like a good, good thing. Okay, a good opportunity. Anything else for future agenda items? If not, community happenings? Anyone have any community events taking place that they're aware of? Okay, then, Mister Wells?
No, I'm gonna let it go.
Okay, all right.
Let it go.
Okay, then I'm going to move that we enter executive session to discuss deployment of security personnel and to, and to consider the purchase exchange lease or value of real property, specifically one-on-one Blue Hills Parkway, believing that having such discussion in open session would have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the board. And, and it, as I mentioned earlier, we're going to defer forty-one war from three thirty-four Ed Schill. Do we have a second? And we are not going to return to open session. We're going to adjourn from the executive session.
Second, Madam Chair.
Okay, all in favor, Mister Doyle? I can see you saying yes. Yes, Mister Zulus?
Yes.
Mister Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, so we are now in executive session, and we will adjourn from executive session.